You ready to go? You ready to go? Call this meeting to order. Please stand, take off your hats, salute our flag, repeat after me. Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the calling for which the fans, one nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all. I now turn this meeting over to Michelle Richardson for administration of the oath of office to Dr. Osman.
Hi.
Hi, Erica Osman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey
Constitution of the state of New Jersey
And that I will bear a true faith and allegiance
And that I will bear a true faith and allegiance
To the same and to the governments established
To the same and to the governments established
In the United States and this state
In the United States and this state
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I
I, Erica Osman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
For the office of member of the Board of Education
For the office of member of the Board of Education
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 1941
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 1941
Am not disqualified due to conviction of crime or offense
Am not disqualified due to conviction of crime or offense
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
All the duty of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Barakis?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Dr. Osman?
Present.
Mr. Perman, Ms. Palmeri?
Present.
Mr. Sargent?
Present.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Walsh?
Present.
Need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Barakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Upstain.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
I will turn this meeting over to Mrs. Palmeri for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board. I do have a rather lengthy superintendent's report this month. We have a few presentations tonight, some important information to share, but most importantly, the way we love to begin our superintendent's report at the board meetings to hear from our high school student board representatives, and we'll begin this evening from hearing from Brooklyn from Liberty.
Thank you, Superintendent Permelee, Board of Ed members, and guests. Happy New Year to all. I hope you had a nice, safe holiday over the break. Although this month did not start off as planned, Liberty did a great job adapting back to the virtual world. Students were excited to be back in person, back to sports and activities, and ready to make 2022 the best year yet. Despite all of the changes to the schedule, the athletic teams are still doing well. The boys swim team has an amazing record of three and one. A big congratulations to one of our very own swim boys, Justin Watts, who was listed as one of the standout athletes in the Shore Conference last Sunday. The girls swim team is also having a good start to their season with a record of two and two. The boys basketball team has been playing and practicing really well and holds a record of five and two. The winter track teams are still getting attention as well, with several participants earning medals and PRs at this weekend's event. The wrestling team took third at the Buck Classic Wrestling Tournament, and Tony Urso and Peter Avline both won gold at their respective weight classes. All of the sports teams are working very hard. We are excited for all teams to complete the rest of their seasons and finish strong. The teams have not been the only ones practicing. The atlet players have been busy at rehearsal and are only a little over a month away until their opening night for The Little Mermaid. They can't wait to perform for everyone on February 24th, 25th, and 26th. Before we left from break, JTV had a successful, entertaining, annual holiday spectacular throughout the school day, which can be viewed on the Jackson Television YouTube channel. Even though the holiday season has come to an end, it includes lots of fun music videos, commercials, live events, and so much more, so be sure to check that out. Even though the start of this year didn't start off exactly as we wanted it to, we have a lot planned for the rest of the month and for the rest of the first semester, which will be ending on the 28th of this month. Thank you for your support of all that is going on at Liberty. I look forward to updating you next month with even more highlights because I know that this year is only going to get better from here.
Thank you, Brooklyn. I appreciate that positive attitude, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing The Little Mermaid. Okay, so for Memorial tonight, we have Dakota here to give us some updates.
Good evening, Mrs. Permelee, members of the Central Administration staff and board members. First, I would like to extend a warm welcome to all our new board members and my sincerest thanks to those whose terms have just ended. The past month has been transitional, and we're thankful for the upcoming events that we hope will signal continued progress towards a more normal, everyday experience. These include final exams on the 27th and 28th, which, well, to be honest, nobody is really looking forward to them, are necessary for our transition into a new semester. The class of 2023 has begun selling bids for Junior Formal, which is scheduled to take place on April 8th at Jumping Brook in Neptune, while the JROTC Ball is going to be held in March also at Jumping Brook. The past month has also seen a great number of college acceptances for our seniors, including admissions to Pitt, UConn, Rowan, Fordham, William &amp; Mary, Rutgers, Monmouth, Coastal Carolina, James Madison University, and Stockton University, among others. These achievements are not only a reflection of the great quality of education being provided, but also a testament to the efforts of our student body. We've managed a packed extracurricular schedule, including the Jackson Academy of Business's virtual field trip to Rutgers Business School to take part in their Ruby program. The Ruby program has been a great resource for business students as they learn and own skills crucial to their growth as future business people. Our DECA chapter is eighteen members, myself included, of its forty-three possible competitors qualified for state competition, with others also attending as a result of writing papers and presentations. That'll be starting next month in Atlantic City. The school's FBLA chapter is currently operating a vintage shop in McCullough, providing gently-used clothing to underprivileged students, with each article costing only $1. The JROTC, meanwhile, has helped to raise money for the volunteer auxiliary at Pet Shelters Incorporated, aided, excuse me, in the Christmas event for Liberty Haven Farms, and consistently sent cadets to the food pantries to aid families and individuals in need. I'm especially happy to report a remarkably successful month for our sports teams, capped off by an absolutely brilliant string of performances from our girls' basketball team. Zoe Maffey, who I mentioned in the last update, put up a triple-double, our first in decades. Brooke McCown, the president of the senior class and all-around great player, broke the school record for three-pointers in a game. Finally on that front, Amber Williams has been a brick wall on defense, putting up a double-double in her last game. We wish them luck in their future games. Another record-breaking performance has come from senior high jumper Adam O'Holy, who has broken the school indoor high jump record, jumping six feet, four inches at the Ocean Breeze Complex in Staten Island, a feat he hopes to match or better during his quest to make the national competition. The girls' wrestling team is ranked first in the state, winning their last meet against Kingsway, powered to victory by brilliant pins by Miranda Zona, Chloe Lawler, and Camilla Brua. The boys team is ten and four, ranked seventh in the Shore Conference, and Coach Worth Stanley wanted me to mention how engaged and involved the team has been. In particular, Luke Hammond, Jason Seda, Mike Rouch, Niko Fanadoron brothers Luis and John Espinoza, who had just moved to the district, are all having good years and prepared to defend the legacy of excellence that has been built on the JAG wrestling brand. The boys swim team is six and two on the season, and the girls' team is working towards making the start competition. Our boys distance team has placed third in the prelims for Ocean County Relays with multiple top-ten state relay times, and we're looking forward to attending the Ocean County Relay Finals on Thursday, where they hope again to place in the top three. So again, a brilliant showing from our athletes this past month. We applaud them for their efforts and commitment to continued excellence, and we're thankful for this degree of normalcy for the winter season. We hope it will continue. So I'd like to finish off by again thanking members of the board and you, Ms. Superintendent, for allowing me the privilege of addressing this body. And I believe in speaking for everyone when I say I'm hoping for a safe, productive school year in 2022. I look forward to addressing you again next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dakota, for that informative report about the happenings at Memorial. So as I mentioned at the beginning of my superintendent's report, we do have a few presentations this evening. We'll begin this evening with a presentation to the board from our auditor, Mr. John Swisher from the Subleek Clooney and Company, who will give us an update on our annual fiscal report.
I chose the wrong seat. Good evening, everybody. I come here once a year to talk to you about the results of your audit. The audits required by the state of New Jersey, every school district in the state has to have one. Tonight's a little bit different, though. You have in front of you a draft of the audit report. This is because the reports across the state again are delayed due to the fact that the state of New Jersey cannot provide certain information to us involving one of the accounting standards, GASB 75. It has to do with your post-retirement benefits. We're hopeful that this information is going to be issued within the next couple of weeks. Once that's done, we will amend the report that you have in front of you, and we'll be able to officially issue it. The changes are not really going to change a lot of the numbers in your report. It's kind of a net deal, a zero-sum type of situation. So most of the numbers you have in the draft there are going to remain the same, which is good. But again, I'll just start at the beginning. I'm going to treat this as though this is the report, okay, although it isn't draft right now. The reason that you hire our firm or any firm to come in and do an audit is to render an opinion on your financial statements and to say that they are free from material misstatement. So we come in every year, and we check the records, and we test the records to make sure that they're correct. And the best opinion that you can get is an unmodified opinion, which is what you've got this year. And that basically means that the Finance Department and the Business Administrator's Office can provide records that we can put into a format that complies with GAAP, and that we can render an opinion that they are free from material misstatement. You can rely upon them, yourselves, the public, a lending institution, et cetera. So a clean opinion, that's great. Also, as a government unit, you have other opinions in the report that involve internal controls, which are the rules and regulations that you have internally to process orders, post receipts, et cetera, et cetera, and compliance with the various rules and regulations of the state of New Jersey. So there's an opinion on that, and that is clean as well, okay? If you had a lot of issues with our testing, you would see that there would be a modification of that opinion. But again, our testing did not reveal anything that required comment in that opinion, so two for two. Thirdly, we're required to do a third opinion on federal and state programs. It's called a single audit, where we go in and we look at various programs. We rotate them each year. Your Title I program, your IDEA, and very appropriate now, the CARES Act money that came out, really was a game changer. But the district did a good job with that as well. We did a lot of testing on that and didn't find any material problems, so that opinion is clean too. So the report that I have in front of me is called the, what was called the CAFR, C-A-F-R, has now been changed to ACFR, A-C-F-R. I'm still getting used to it myself. It's a change that was going to be required for reports starting next year. We early implemented it, and it turns out that the previous name was not a good word in another country, so they changed it. So you'll see throughout the report, that might be a little confusing to some people, but they've changed it from the previous name to ACFR. And I'm still working on pronouncing that, but we'll get there eventually. Secondly, you're going to get a second report on top of the new ACFR, and it's called an Auditor's Management Report. That report is required by the State Department of Education, and they ask us to specifically report on various areas of compliance that they deem to be important, be it payroll, student activities, capital assets, et cetera, et cetera. It's this report where you would find comments and recommendations, okay? As I kind of already gave away the end of the story, your opinions are clean, and that basically means that you don't have any comments in your management report, which is really good as well. So you get, it's actually good news tonight. The opinions are clean, and the management report, when you do receive it, when we get all the final information, will be clean as well because, again, the information that we're waiting for from the state is not going to change anything that I'm speaking about here tonight. So that's the reporting element of it. Fiscally, you're still in good shape. I'll particularly take note to say that you were able to put $500,000 of your surplus into the capital reserve, okay? For those who have heard my speech before. You're allowed to keep certain money set aside for restricted capital projects contained within your long-range facility plan. And you use the money, but you have to reseed it from time to time, and it's hard to do. As things get tighter, okay, budgets get tighter, it's hard to put money into that account, but you were able to put $500,000 into it, which is key in a district the size of Jax with all the buildings that you have. You're constantly in the process of upgrading and doing things, so it's really important to get money into that account. So you were able to accomplish that year, which is very good. So I'll pause right now, and I'll take any questions from the board or from the public on the draft ACFR. There's a lot of information in the report, and so as you look through it and it gets finalized, if there's any questions that come up, I'd be more than happy to come back to the meeting and answer any questions that you have. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the Business Office, particularly Sandy Patterson sitting over there. She takes most of the slings and arrows during our process. And it's not easy. You're trying to do your job day to day, and it's the death by a thousand cuts, question after question after question. And we get answers quickly, and that's kind of important. We ask for information, we get information. Any issues that we have are resolved. So it's a very good job. Michelle, of course, you know, was used to sit in that seat a long time ago, and now she's moved up a little bit, but she knows what that's all about. And we got great support from your administration, they're doing a fine job. So if there's no other questions, I'll conclude, and again, if you need anything from us, you'll get the final report hopefully within the next few weeks. And if you have any other questions as you go through the report, I'd be happy to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Swisher. Much appreciated.
No problem.
And thank you and congratulations to Ms. Richardson, Ms. Patterson, and the rest of the Business Department on a very clean audit. Nice work. Thank you. Also this evening, we have Mr. Rotante, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, who will be presenting again on our Start Strong data. Mr. Rotante did already report publicly on this data that was available to us earlier on in the school year through the Pearson website. However, our aggregated data, our subgroup data, was not available at that time, so he is going to present on our subgroup data this evening. Mr. Rotante?
Thanks, Mrs. Permelee. Yeah, I just want to take a few minutes to go over what our Start Strong data shows from our test that was administered back in October to all of our students that I'll explain who received them. So the rationale behind the Start Strong assessment, it was to provide all districts with a piece of data that would help support curriculum and help support instruction. Our districts, for as long as I can recall, we've always had several different data points, several different assessments that we've used to provide that information to us. So this was just one additional piece that was available to the district that we were able to use from our October assessments. You can see from this slide here that all of our students in grades four through 10 were assessed in the areas of English. All of our students in grades four through eight were assessed in mathematics. Our high school students that were in geometry, Algebra I or Algebra II, and as well as our science students in grades six, grades nine, and grades 12. On the high school level, all of our students in those courses were assessed regardless of where they were in their block schedule. So a student that may not have geometry till the spring semester was still given this assessment in October to provide information for each student. This is a district summary of our English assessment, and the way that Start Strong reported the data was basically three categories. It was either reported as for each individual student if strong support was needed, if some support was needed, or less support was needed. Each individual student also received their own breakdown of how they did with much more specific information as far as the amount of questions they got correct, what areas they got questions correct. All of those forms were sent home with all of our students the week before our winter break. If any parents did not receive that and your student is in one of those assessment grades, just reach out to your school or myself, and we will get you a copy of that information if you did not receive it. Sorry, thanks, Allison. In the area of literacy, where you can really see on this slide is, you know, the majority of our students did show that less support was needed. This is really a tribute to really how hard our students have worked over the past year. Regardless of the changing learning environments we've had, our kids have done a nice job of reading, writing, and kind of staying on top of those skills. And this data really does show a trend that less support was needed in the areas of literacy based on this specific assessment. Math showed a slightly different picture. Math definitely showed there was definitely some more support needed in the areas of mathematics. You can see very specifically in the areas of, you know, grades four and five, more support was needed in those areas. This assessment too is a very, a different type of assessment, completely done on the computer. Typically, when we have these type of assessments, we spend time working with our students to make sure that they're aware of the test format. They're aware of the ins and outs of completing answers online. There's dropdown menus, things like that. In light of this being a one-day snapshot, the literacy test was 10 questions, the math was about 20 questions. We really felt that the time was better spent leading up to this test and really making sure that we were continuing teaching our students learning versus spending time on test prep and making sure they knew how to, you know, finagle a certain website. So that may have impacted some of our students' scores, but either way, it did give us, you know, we are provided with some good data that we can use moving forward. The area of science, you can see here, same thing, grades six, grades nine, and grade 12. And on the high school level, many of our 12th graders have completed their science requirements. They are not even taking science courses this year. So what the test was assessing was really material that they're not going to be working on during the school year. But we did administer that test to all of our students in grades six, nine, and 12. You can see here from our subgroup data, this first slide's in literacy. What it did show, and it's obviously something that, you know, we're well aware of, and I think all districts are well aware of. You know, students in the areas of special education and ELL are always going to need your strongest support. You know, we have the most amount of programs available, the most amount of support for those students, and we'll work with them on the next couple of slides. I'll mention some of the ways that we'll be working with all of our students, but specifically our special ed and our ELL students. And the math data with our subgroups also shows, you know, the same results that, you know, in the areas of special ed and ELL, that's the one area where our students, you know, definitely do need our most support. This is just a listing of all of the district assessments that we do use on an everyday basis. These are terminologies and words and programs that are very familiar to your children, very familiar to our teachers. The way that this information is used in the classroom is very beneficial to the students. It's really proven data, whereas the Start Strong data is really unproven assessment. It's the first time it's ever been given. These are assessments that we've used for many, many years and are very tried and true, and we're able to get very valuable data from these assessments. This next slide is just an example of one of the assessments that we use. We use our math benchmark testing. And this slide shows how our students overall did by grade level this year. I went back two years to the year before the pandemic began, and then two years prior to that in the 1718 school year. And what you can see from this chart is, you know, our students have performed at a very comparable level after the first four topics of the math series. This test is given really usually typically in December and January. It assesses how our students did during the first four units and what their content mastery is of that knowledge after the first four units. You can actually see that in some areas, our students in some grade levels outperformed how they did two years ago or even four years ago. This next slide shows our SMI assessments that we use, I'm sorry, our mid-year Lincoln assessments that we use. Our goal throughout the year is always to see progress in our students. We always want to see our kids progressing. We want to make sure that they're learning. We want to reach each individual kid and move them along as they progress in their educational program. The slide on the left there, the picture on the left, that is a test that was given in the beginning of the year. That's Form A at the very beginning of the year. And what that shows our teachers and shows our staff is students that are not meeting grade level standards, students that are only partially meeting grade level standards. As the year progresses, we want to move those kids up that continuum. The slide on the right shows Form B, which was just given in the last few weeks. And from that slide, you can see we've moved kids who were not meeting standards to partially meeting. We've moved students who are partially meeting to meeting standards. Students who are approaching standards to now meeting or exceeding standards. So our goal is to constantly move kids up on the continuum, and a lot of the data that we're using, and really the hard work to our teachers of what they're doing with our students in the classroom and what our students are doing in the classroom is a tribute to why our students are, you know, many, many of our students are moving up that continuum. Another program that we've really been using a lot this year is called iXL. iXL is an individualized program that addresses each student's needs. Questions are given to the students based on their level. As they get questions right, they get harder. As they get questions wrong, they get more remedial questions to reinforce things. These are done in the classroom, as well as kids have opportunities to do these independently at home. Typically, a student doing about 15 questions a day will outperform their peers, will move up the continuum, will show growth. So far through last week, when we ran this report, our students in grades K through eight are averaging 63 questions per week. So our students are really working very hard. We're very proud of what they're doing, and it's definitely showing in how they're doing in the classrooms. Based on that 63 questions number that was on the previous slide, you can see on this slide, this is the average monthly growth by grade level in math. You can see how the students are growing, especially in the upper elementary, middle school level where the skills are getting harder and more work is being put into that. So to address some of the needs that we've seen, not just in the Start Strong data, but also the data that we have and what we've seen with our own students, we have many, many programs that we've been running throughout the year, and others, there's additional ones that you'll see on the agenda tonight, additional programs that you'll see moving forward in future board meetings. We can't run every program every day. We have staff members that have to do these programs. We only have so many availability with staff members and buses and transportation to, you know, to make sure these programs work. So what you can see up here is after-school programs that are currently being run in the middle school and high school level. We have an elementary before-school program that's on the agenda this evening that will be starting up next week. That'll give our students that were identified as some of the students needing strong support with intense intense instruction in the areas of literacy and math to help them progress. We'll continue to do our summer school programs that we ran last summer as well as coming into this next summer. And in addition to that too, there's ELL programs for our ELL students that we'll be running, and also other programs that happen outside of the school day, such as intramurals that will be, you'll see on the agenda. You'll also see programs like esports. These are programs that we want to enhance our school environment for our students and increase their appreciation of being in the school setting. Certain programs that are just math and literacy-based don't always make kids excited to come to school. When you have some programs that really kids enjoy and they look forward to, it increases their desire to be in school, and also then academic success can follow from that. So here's just a general list of some of the programs that we've been providing so far, and we'll continue to, you know, be providing additional programs as the year progresses and even into, obviously, the next school year as well to address all of our student needs. At this point, I'll ask any questions from the board regarding any of the slides or information? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotante. I know you, the director, supervise-
I know you, the directors, supervisors, building administrators, teachers, are all working hard to target the areas we know that we need to support our students in. Lots of interventions happening during the school day and beyond the school day. So a few updates before we move to our next presentation in regards to a December board meeting and the January reorganization meeting. At the December board meeting during public comment, there was a reference made to a chair or said to be, or as said at that meeting, a breathing chair in a PE class in one of our schools. As described at that meeting, it was described as a place in which one student at a time was to sit and take a mask break. Obviously, we did an investigation the very next day and discovered that the chair that was used to define where the students could take a break safely, as they are using a half of the gym for lunch so that they can socially distance while students on the other side are participating in PE. So it prevents us from pulling the bleachers out for a safe spot for students to take a rest. The chair defined the space on where it was safe to sit so that no one would get hurt during the PE period. The teacher encourages that students use that area to sit if they need a break for any reason in the class so that they are safe. The teacher also does not make students wear a mask during activity, nor was it called a breathing chair. Our PE teachers do remind our students that they do need to wear a mask. They do not need to wear a mask for any physical activity, but please know that some students do choose to still wear it even though we remind them that they do not need to. We allow for the choice. As always, I encourage parents to reach out to the teacher first with a concern and then building administrator and follow the chain of command if they have any other concerns. So I wanted to update the public on that information. Additionally, at the last board meeting, it was a reorg meeting, we had some questions in regards to timelines and process for the non-public transportation. I just wanted to update again the public and the board. As mentioned, the district is striving to make the process and communication clearer. And one step in that direction, there is now a non-public transportation page on the district website under Departments and go to Transportation. This should assist our non-public families with information and forms, and any updates that we have, we will continue to post on that page. There is and has always been an email address that our non-public families can use to send questions to. I encourage our non-public families to use that web address. So those are just a couple of updates. Continuing with our presentations tonight, I am going to ask Mr. Zittimer, our board attorney, to present to our board members an overview of the ethics now that we have a full board who has been sworn in.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the administration, members of the Jackson community. Thank you for inviting me here to speak on the New Jersey School Ethics Act. For those who are here at our organization meeting, I did an executive summary of the School Ethics Act, but as Ms. Pormili points out, now that the full board is seated, we felt it was appropriate to get a little bit more into the weeds in terms of what the School Ethics Act requires of school officials. So in New Jersey, we have the School Ethics Act. Is there a remote that I can use or to advance the slides by any chance or?
I have the PDF of the slides.
Okay, so I'll just tell you to advance for me, please. Thanks, perfect. You can go to the next slide. So in New Jersey, we have the New Jersey School Ethics Act. And the School Ethics Act essentially prescribes the ethical do's and don'ts for Board of Education members and other school officials. And the preamble, the opening statement to the School Ethics Act sums up very nicely why we have the Ethics Act in the state of New Jersey. And what it says is that "In our representative form of government, it's essential that the conduct of members of local boards of education and local administrators hold the respect and the confidence of the people. The officials must avoid conduct which is in violation of the public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated." And I always advise board members that you not only have to avoid actual conflicts of interest, but you also have to avoid what's called the appearance of impropriety. If there's something that doesn't pass the test, if somebody's going to question whether you're acting for your own personal interests or for the interest of a family member or a business that you're affiliated with, you should always avoid that course of action. If it's a vote that's come before the Board of Education, you should abstain. If it's a closed session discussion, you should recuse yourself and so forth. I would always err on the side of caution when it comes to acts because you are a public official. Next slide, please. So who does the School Ethics Act applies to? The act not only applies to Board of Education members, it also applies to employees and officers of the New Jersey School Boards Association as well as school administrators. Now, within the School Ethics Act, we have the Code of Ethics, which I'm going to go over in a minute. The Code of Ethics only applies to the conduct of Board of Education members. Next. So other key terms that I wanted to highlight are member of an immediate family. And the School Ethics Act really does draw a little bit of a distinction between members of immediate family who are your spouses of board members or school officials, dependent child, children who actually live in your household, and then you have relatives. Relatives would be a spouse, the picture kind of covered the slide there, siblings, as well as your children who are emancipated. And there's a greater conflict generally when it comes to members of your immediate family than it does to relatives. For instance, if you're a Board of Education member and you have a sister, for instance, that's in a neighboring union in another school district. Generally, you're allowed as a Board of Education member to participate fully in the negotiations process if you have a relative who's in the same union. The same does not hold true if you have an immediate family member, say, who's in a union in a neighboring school district. So for instance, if your spouse works in a neighboring town and they're a member of the NJA, for instance, if you're a board member, you have to fully recuse yourself from the negotiations process until there's a memorandum of agreement and salary guides, at which point then you can get involved. So again, there's a greater conflict when it comes to members of your immediate family. Next slide. So the School Ethics Act is essentially broken down into two parts, and I've handed out a copy of it to the members of the board here this evening. We have Section 1, which deals with conflicts of interest. Those are things where board members shouldn't act if they have a direct or indirect, personal or financial involvement. And then, like I mentioned earlier, you also have the Code of Ethics for board members. This is all, by the way, codified in board policies, available on your website as well. Next slide. So I want to go over some of the various Code of Ethics provisions, and I've, again, handed them out to everybody. So Section B of the Code of Ethics, and by the way, they're all pertinent, there's lots of them, so I did want to highlight some of the areas that I thought were more pertinent and perhaps areas where sometimes board members may get themselves into a little trouble. Section B says, "I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, color, sex, or social standing." Next. We have Section C. Section C really defines what the role of a board member is, and I think a lot of members of the community sometimes think that board members have a lot greater authority, a lot greater involvement in the day-to-day operations of the school district, which is really not true. The role of a board member essentially is to set policy for the school district. So the Code of Ethics in Section C says, "The role of a board member is to set policy, plan for the future of the district, and appraise. At the end, take a step back and say, 'How are we doing?'" The code says you're supposed to frame those policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who are affected by them. We generally do this through our various work on our committees. Next. Section D, and this is an area where board members frequently get themselves into trouble. "You will carry out your responsibility," and I want to highlight the word "not" there, "not to administer the schools, but together with your fellow board members to see that they are well-run." Not to run the schools, but to see they are well-run. We have an excellent administrative team here in Jackson. They are the ones that are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the school district, not the Board of Education. So the Code of Ethics and some of the other regulatory provisions set forth what somebody would have to show, for instance, to show that somebody violated all of the sections, but let's say, let's see what they said about that particular section. So to show that somebody, a board member, respondent, violated the administration provision, somebody would have to show that a board member gave a direct order to school personnel or became directly involved in activities or functions that are the responsibility of school personnel or the day-to-day administration of the school district. And so the SEC, which is the School Ethics Commission, in this particular case from 2005, found that a board member violated this section when the board member went into the office, demanded copies of SAT reports from the guidance secretary, did his own inspection of the school lockers in the boys' locker room, gave directions to the PE teachers about how they should better teach the classes that particular day, and talked generally to the staff about supervision. This board member went way off the rails here, should not have been getting involved in that, at that level by having direct interactions with staff, giving orders to staff, and so on and so forth. So next, as a board member, you have to recognize that your authority rests with the Board of Education. You have authority to act when you're at a meeting like this with your fellow board members, and that you're not allowed to make personal promises or take private action that could compromise the Board of Education. It doesn't actually have to compromise the board, it's enough that it has the potential to compromise the Board of Education. So again, you should not be making promises outside this meeting to folks in the community about what you're going to do and so on and so forth, or do your own investigations or take otherwise what's called private action. That's a clear violation of Section E. Next. Section F, "You are to refuse to surrender your independent judgment to special interest groups or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends." Again, as I pointed out in one of the earlier slides, you're here for everybody. You're not supposed to be catering to a particular special interest group. Next. Confidentiality. So board members, as members of a Board of Education, come upon a lot of confidential information, and the law does allow us to go into executive or closed session to discuss confidential matters, confidential student matters, confidential personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege and so forth. And what the Code of Ethics says is that board members will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. And in all other matters, you have to provide accurate information. So you're certainly allowed to express your opinions and so forth, but the point is, you have to make sure that what you're saying as it pertains to the Jackson School District is accurate. Next. "I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties." Does this mean we have to rubber stamp everything that comes our way from the administration? No, it does not. And it also allows, of course, board members to ask good questions. You're supposed to ask good questions, we're supposed to engage in dialogue, but the point is we're not supposed to evaluate our administrators in a public setting, we're not supposed to publicly embarrass our administrators and other staff members in the Jackson School District. That is not supporting and protecting school personnel. And so if somebody were to try to prove there was a violation of this particular provision, they would have to show evidence that a board member took deliberate action which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Next. So Section C says that you're going to refer all complaints to the administrative officer, in this case, Ms. Pormili, and you're supposed to act on those complaints at a meeting only after the failure of an administrative solution. So if somebody comes up to you at the local supermarket with a complaint about the teacher giving too much homework or the principal not doing this or that, you're supposed to thank that community member and you're supposed to, in turn, take their name and give it to Ms. Pormili, because Ms. Pormili, as the chief administrative officer, is the one who is responsible for handling all complaints in the district. It gives the board members, quite frankly, an opportunity to punt and to get the complaint in the right hands, which again is that of the administration. Next. So if somebody believes that a particular board member violated the School Ethics Act or a code provision or administrator violated the Ethics Act, what is their recourse? Their recourse is to file a complaint with the New Jersey School Ethics Commission. The School Ethics Commission is part of the Department of Education, it's an agency in the state of New Jersey. It's comprised of two community members, it's comprised of superintendents from certain school districts who have been appointed by the governor. The Attorney General also sits and guides the School Ethics Commission, they have a director and so forth. It's comprised of about 11 members, and they are the ones responsible for deciding whether a particular Board of Education member has violated the School Ethics Act. So if somebody can file a complaint, anybody can file a complaint with the School Ethics Commission. The only caveat is that there's a six-month statute of limitations, so the complaint has to be filed within six months of the time that the alleged violation took place. The other thing I want to point out to board members is that New Jersey has an indemnification statute. And what that essentially means is that when a complaint is brought against a board member or other school official for something that arose out of them being on the Board of Education, the law does provide that board members are made whole for any out-of-pocket legal fees and expenses that they may incur in defending themselves. And you might say, "Well, that sounds crazy. An ethics complaint is filed and the board member gets an attorney basically at Board of Education expense?" And the answer is yes. Our legislature figured that if they didn't have indemnification for volunteer board members, nobody would ever want to be on a Board of Education if they could be personally, financially out-of-pocket for cases. Some have merit, and I've seen many that don't. So that's important to mention that we have this statute. So like I mentioned, the School Ethics Commission is really the only entity in the state of New Jersey that could determine whether somebody's course of conduct violated the School Ethics Act. If there's ever a question about whether a board member should engage in a particular course of action, you can actually write to the School Ethics Commission and they will issue what's called an advisory opinion. You set forth what the facts are, and they will give you an opinion about whether you should or should not engage in that particular course of action. As board attorney, I'm also happy to provide my own opinion, although ultimately, it's only the School Ethics Commission's opinion that matters on these things. So if somebody has violated the School Ethics Act, what are the penalties? So at the light end, you have a reprimand. That's essentially a letter from the School Ethics Commission slapping the board member or other school official on the wrist for, or on the hand for violating the School Ethics Act. You have a censure, which is the next step up. A censure is a resolution, a public resolution read at a board meeting admonishing the board member for violating the School Ethics Act. A board member could be suspended from the Board of Education. I've seen cases where board members are suspended anywhere at the low end, from 30 days to up to a year. And then ultimately, the most severe sanction is removal from the Board of Education. So do you think a board member could be, that you can file an ethics case against a board member if they're no longer on the board? What do you think about that? Dr. Osman is shaking his head, yes, and you are correct. Of course, removal is not going to be an option in terms of penalty, but the censure could be, as long as it fits within that six-month statute of limitations. So one of the questions I often get is, you know, do board members lose their right to speak out on issues now that they're on the Board of Education? And the answer is no. Board members have First Amendment rights, just like everybody else does, to express their viewpoints on issues. The only caveat, as I mentioned before, is that you have to say things that are accurate about the school district. You can't say, "I'm not voting for the school budget this year because we're adding 10 new administrators in Jackson," when in fact, the reality may be, I'm just making this up as an example, we're only adding two administrators in Jackson. So if you're going to say something, the key is you have to make sure that what you're saying to the community is accurate. You also can't divulge confidential information, so that's a limitation, or you can't take action which has the ability to compromise the board or to undermine our administration. And that has to go with the last bullet point there about not publicly criticizing staff. Other than that, you have First Amendment rights. What's important to recognize, though, is that when you're outside of a Board of Education meeting and you're going to give a speech to the community, you're going to write a letter to the newspaper, which is your right, it's important that you have a disclaimer. And what our policy says is that you should not represent your personal opinion as the position of the Board of Education, and you have to include in all formal expressions, such as letters to government officials, newspapers, and so forth, a statement that you're speaking as a private citizen, you're speaking as an individual, you're not speaking on behalf of the board, and that your opinions don't necessarily represent that of the Board of Education. Just so there's no confusion in the community, that is Mr. X board member speaking for the Board of Education, or is Mr. X board member or Ms. X solely giving their own viewpoint and their own personal opinion? So it's important, if you're a board member, for instance, that likes to use social media a lot, make sure you have that disclaimer when you talk about issues pertaining to the Jackson School District to make it crystal clear that you are speaking in your individual capacity and not on behalf of the Board of Education. And I gave everybody a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. Here's the sample language that the School Ethics Commission suggests that you utilize, which is that the following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen and not in my capacity as a board member. These statements are also not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinion. So that's like their model language. So I've done a little quiz here. Unfortunately, the slide is a PDF, so I can't really have the true and false, you know, rise and fall, but I'll tell you what the answers are. And this is, again, this is not to play gotcha with anybody, but these are actual real cases from the School Ethics Commission. So I'm going to just go down the line here. Ms. Baracus, and I know you're new, so you kind of get a pass, but what do you think? This is a real case. These are cases that came out of the School Ethics Commission this past year. So tell me what you think of this case and whether this is a true or false. A Board of Education member who is a deacon, and by the way, if you go to the New Jersey School Ethics Commission website, part of the Department of Ed, just Google New Jersey School Ethics Commission. School Ethics Commission, if you actually want to read these cases, some of them are 20 pages long, I've kind of distilled them down to like a small paragraph here, but if you want to read more about the facts of these cases, you can certainly do that on their website. But in this case, a board member who was a deacon with a local church and received an annual $2,000 honorarium for his services violated Section C of the Act, and Section C says, "No school official shall act in his official capacity in any manner where he, a member of his immediate family, or a business organization in which he has an interest, has a direct or indirect financial involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair his objectivity or independence of judgment." So do you think that section was violated when he made a motion and then voted to accept his church's application to use school district facilities? And again, this is a church that he received money from. Do you think that was a conflict, true or false? You're correct, that is a true. They found that it was completely improper, he should have abstained, he was receiving money and his objectivity, or at least it would have appeared to the public that his objectivity was completely biased or not impartial. Dr. Osborne, how about this one? A board member violated Section B of the School Ethics Act, which says that a board member should not use or attempt to use his official position to secure unwarranted privileges or advantages or employment for himself or members of his immediate family. So did a board member violate Section B of the Act in the Code of Ethics by making a motion to change Columbus Day on the district calendar to Indigenous People Day stating that her vote was due in part to the good example that she wanted to set for her child? Do you think that was a violation, yes or no? Yes? No, it was not. It turned out to be proper. So, and I'll read you from the actual decision. "The School Ethics Commission said that as a general matter, board members are oftentimes guided by their own personal opinions and beliefs about a particular issue or cause, and unless the conduct or action exceeds the scope of their authority or is otherwise unethical," which is not the case here, "board members are free to do so." So they found that, look, just because she had a personal belief in something, it didn't mean it was a violation of the School Ethics Act. Mr. Sargent. An executive of a charter school violated Section A of the School Ethics Act, which says, "No school official or member of his immediate family shall have an interest in a business organization or engage in a business transaction which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties." So an executive director violated that section when she posted Black Lives Matter heart-shaped logo and a statement on the school website endorsing the Black Lives Matter organization. Do you think that was a true or a false? It was a false because they found that she didn't have an interest, she wasn't involved with the Black Lives Matter organization, it was not a violation. These are hard folks, so again, I'm not trying to trip anybody up here. Ms. Rivera. It's a little bit long here, but a board member violated Sections E, F, and G. E is recognizing your authority rests with the board, F is refusing to surrender your independent judgment, and G is confidentiality. So did a board member violate this provision when he along with other township officials distributed a flyer to those of Indian descent requesting they vote for candidates in the 2019 Democratic primary election bracketed under the slogan, "Middlesex County Democratic Organization"? The flyer mentioned, among other things, that the person named on the flyer support South Asian persons and culture and stated that the opponent, the person they were running against, was the leader of a radical group. The board member signed the flyer and the signature included his picture and his name followed by the words, "Board of Education," but he did not use the disclaimer. Was that a violation, true or false? It's a true. They found that he should have had that disclaimer, he should have said, "I'm speaking as an individual." You're allowed to endorse people, you're allowed to say what you feel, but if you're going to do that, like I mentioned before, you need to have that disclaimer. Mr. Walsh. A board member violated Section I and G of the Code. I is supporting and protecting school personnel, G deals with confidentiality. When she shared a post on her first personal Facebook page that casted the complainant, who also was a substitute in the district, in a negative light, namely the post alleged that the substitute was removed from her position in the district as a result of unspecified misconduct. Do you think that was a violation, true or false? True, you're right, it was. That's not supporting school personnel by telling folks on social media that a substitute in the district was removed for misconduct. Who are we up to? Mr. Palmeri. A board member violated Section B of the Ethics Act, and again, just to refresh everybody's memory, that has to do with using your official position to secure unwarranted privileges and advantages. So a board member violated Section B of the Ethics Act when she voted to approve a resolution acknowledging that the superintendent had completed a merit goal. Her child was employed in the district as a teacher, so the board member's child worked in the district. As such, at the time of the vote, the superintendent had supervisory authority over the child. Do you think that that was a violation? True, absolutely. The board member should have recused herself because her child was in the line of supervision of the superintendent of schools. We have to, Ms. Cass? Okay, next slide. A board member violated Section E of the Code. In this kind of case, you may have read about it because it was from a neighboring school district, made my head spin. It's that you're recognizing your authority rests with the board and you're not to make personal promises or take private action that could compromise the board. And so in this case, a board member violated Section E of the Code when he posted on Facebook many anti-Muslim sentiments, including a picture of Congressman Omar wearing a hijab and referring her to as terrorist 100%. In another post, he shared a photo of a doll dressed in a hijab. The doll appears to be a woman, has a black eye and a bruise on its chin. The text under the photo stated, "Sharia Barbie comes with hijab, bruises, and the Quran. Stoning accessories available for additional purchase." Do you think that was a problem? Do you think that was private action that compromised the Board of Education? Yes, true, absolutely. And what the judge said in that case was, and I just thought it was important to read this, the judge said, "It's not a stretch to consider that students of families of students of Muslim faith may fear that their culture or faith may play a role in adverse decisions by the board based on his expression of negative attitudes towards Muslim culture and faith. Furthermore, they well be discouraged from even asking or seeking redress from the board if they feel there is no point. This is clearly an example of the conduct that would cause members of the board to lose the confidence and respect of the people and creates a justifiable impression that such trust is being violated." Next slide, does anybody on the board or administration have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zidder for the annual ethics required review. We appreciate it. I do have one other presentation this evening in regards to sharing our budget process. We're getting ready to enter into our budget process for the 2223 school year. I will also go to the podium to present a few slides about our process before we move on. So as I mentioned, this is the time of the year where we outline to our public and to the board our process for working on our 2223 school budget. So as a background, as we all know, we have been in this for a while now, for a few years. In 2018, New Jersey passed a law known as S-2 that drastically impacted the amount of state aid we received. The cuts are applied in phases and each year we endure them and are forced to make harder and harder choices. Over the last few years, it's been just awful for the district to lose so much money in their budget. You can see there each year what we have lost. This year, again, S-2 is still intact, although we continue to advocate for fairer funding for the Jackson School District. So for next year's budget, we are looking at a $4.1 million cut, and that's almost $19 million that has been lost over seven years. That's significant, and as you know, over the past few years, we've had to cut drastically in our staff in order to save programming for students. So with that, we do face this cut, and as you know, we can increase our tax levy only by 2%. And last year, that figure was $1.7 million that came to the budget. That obviously is not going to cover a $4.1 million cut towards our budget. Putting that into perspective, when we start budgeting, we are already behind $4.1 million, and that does not account for our contract responsibilities for increases in salaries, rising costs, and as our public well knows and our board, the economy right now with rising costs in everything. Any facility work we want to do, anything in regards to purchasing things has increased tremendously. Gas prices, I'm sure we all feel that at the gas stations ourselves. Increased insurance plans and other increases to tuition outside of our control, and most recently increases drastically to any bids that we go out for for contract and transportation. However, this year, we do have some good news, and that is refreshing for us to be able to say that we do have grant money that is going to help us get through this $4.1 million cut. Do I wish we were other districts not in the same situation who didn't have to cut $4.1 million and all of our grant money could be spent on extras? But we are being wise about what we do so that we again don't look at drastic cuts to staffing for next year. All of this funding, you can see, we put the different timelines in which the money needs to be spent, and we'll begin making sure that we use this money in a fruitful way to support our $4.1 million cut moving forward. And you'll hear more about that throughout the budget process. Our budget timeline and our public input, this is the process we'll be using moving forward. To provide, we'll obviously want to provide multiple opportunities for the public to provide input and ask questions about the budget, both before the tentative budget is created and before the public hearing, and I'll go over a timeline in a moment. The budget calendar is established by the state, which means the budget timeline culminates with the public hearing on April 27th, board meeting. You'll see here, our next board meeting in February, we will be presenting publicly draft budgets for each of these department areas. We will also be going over again how we are using some of those grant funds to help support these programs and departments as well. March, we will present again a tentative budget at the board meeting. And then in April, we will be doing the public hearing for the budget that we are proposing to our county office. And so there's lots of opportunity, those are three meetings right there for public input, obviously board input as well. And as always, we always post all of the information right tomorrow after this meeting. Ms. Irwin will post ways and opportunities for input, how to share your input, ask questions, any budget presentation we do will be posted on our district website as well, and all of our full budget documents, our tentative, proposed, and final budgets will also be posted on our district website. So that is our process that we'll be using in the next few months to create next year's budget. Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Recently, as the board knows and the public, the New Jersey Department of Health had shortened quarantine times for students and staff. Obviously, we were pleased about that, being able to keep our students in school more often. The district did take action immediately, the very next day after those changes were introduced to us, and we have updated our road forward slides accordingly on our district website. I just wanted to remind our public and our students and our parents of high school students that our academy applications are open for the remainder of this week, they will close on Friday. Please, if you're interested in STEM, the arts, digital media, or business, please complete your application, they are excellent programs to be a part of. You heard some of our high school reps talk about some of the wonderful things that were happening in these academies, so I encourage you to apply. And as a final note for our public, our preschool lottery is open now, so please apply if you have a preschool student. It closes on February 4th, and again, any information on that is posted on our district website. And with that, Mr. Walsh, that concludes my very long superintendent's report tonight.
Okay, Standing Committee reports. State and county school boards, Ms. Rivera?
We have the next county meeting February 22nd at 6:30, it will be virtual.
Thank you. Parent Group Liaison, that's me. Okay, there was a virtual meeting on the 12th of January with the parent groups. Superintendent and assistant superintendents discussed a lot of the programs that they talked about today, okay? And the individual schools were talking about what they are doing inside their buildings, such as, you know, scholastic book sales and other events that they are trying to run within the school building for the PTOs. The next meeting will be on March 7th. Special Education, Ms. Rivera?
There'll be a workshop on Wednesday, February 9th, 2022, virtual. The presenter will be, it will be students with disabilities transitioning into Ocean County College. For more information, you know, and it's open to all in district and district families. Thank you.
Okay, Scholarship, that's me. Just to let everyone know that next week, the scholarships will open for all seniors at Jackson Liberty and Jackson Memorial. They can get into the portal, put in their applications and fill in what each sponsor wants as far as their deciding parameters for picking a senior. Building and grounds, I don't think we've really met, we get a report every month, okay? Right now, there's, we do have a few pressing issues with the EPA in our fueling area over there at Memorial, the transportation, okay? And we are in the process of finishing up the ESIP project. I know a few things are behind, okay, but everything seems to be going along pretty well. Okay, Budget and Finance, you've seen the timeframe behind me, okay? The superintendent gave it. We have not met as a subcommittee. The district, after they put all their information together, we will meet as a subcommittee and discuss the budget presentation as it is finalized. Ongoing. Transportation is a very alive situation right now. We have not met with this board as a subcommittee with transportation. It will happen probably within the next month, and we do have a lot of things to discuss. Curriculum Committee, they have not met. They will probably get together within the next month, too. Policy Committee, we haven't met since November, probably meet in February for updating any new policy changes from the state. And our Enrollment and Student Committee, they've only met once, they're still collecting data as far as that's concerned. That basically deals with, okay, the flux in student populations within the different schools, where are they building, how are they building, when are they building, okay? We're still collecting a lot of data as far as that's concerned. That's all the standing committees. Need a motion to approve approval of the minutes, the closed session of the meeting December 15th, 2021, and the official board meeting December 15th, 2021, committee of the whole business meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Ms. Baracus?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Hearing none, roll call.
Ms. Baracus?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
I need a motion to open public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for all other questions. The public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
When your name is called, Mrs., by Mrs. Richardson, please come to the microphone. Each person will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Mrs. Richardson, please call the first person.
The first person on this list is Suri Robinson.
Hello, good evening. It's nice to see you all again. I know, I have a comment, not a question, on the agenda. I noticed that tonight's agenda includes approving some items for the Jackson Public School students, including an overnight trip for a state competition, an intramural flag football after-school program, and an esports program. These are clearly not mandated items, items required by law, yet as parents and educators, of course, we never aim for the minimum to just, a barometer is not what's mandated, but we aim to provide the best for our students and what's good for our students and our children. It's really nice to see the board go above and beyond to include programming that it's good for our students, not simply what's mandated. And I support a yes vote on these items. I am very hopeful that we won't hear the terms, this is what's mandated or required by law, when it comes to creating policy for non-public school transportation. I support a yes vote for the extracurriculars and I thank you for your time.
Hello, and thank you to all our new board members. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I was very happy to see on the agenda a reference involving training for some of the staff in dyslexia. This is a topic that's very close to my heart because my son is dyslexic and he is currently in the fourth grade. I've given all of the board members a copy of the Department of Education, the New Jersey Department of Education's handbook on dyslexia, and in it are best practices. And I've flagged a few pages for your reference because it's really important and even if a student has a diagnosis of dyslexia, this document encompasses best practice for all struggling readers. I think we can agree that the past two years has definitely had an impact on the ability to close the gap for many learners. So I just wanted to draw your attention to this. On the first page, number one, this document is to inform both educators, families, and best practices to support students with dyslexia and other reading difficulties. I then have a flag on page 13 that has a whole section committed to third grade and beyond, and this in particular is why I'm here, because the realization that I have come to this school year with my son in fourth grade is that all of the wonderful foundation programs, that's the name of the interventions for kindergarten through third grade, come to a halt in fourth grade. They are not continued. My son left off on Level Two foundations, started fourth grade, they don't do foundations anymore. So if you could please turn to the orange tab. The reason why this is very important is because when you're providing instruction to address reading difficulties, in particular dyslexia, the program must be sufficiently intensive, frequent sessions, and extended time to accomplish objectives. This is in the making for my son, but as a whole, the district is not, this is not written into curriculum. I asked for the scope and sequency, sequence for literacy instruction for fourth grade, and if you please turn to the blue tab, struggling readers need phonetic, phonics, a structured literacy program, intense, cumulative, and ongoing. And this scope and sequence, where I have the blue tag, shows the very many varied phonics or phonemes that struggling readers have to learn. Nowhere in the district's scope and sequence for literacy is any phonics listed. It's higher level comprehension goals, and they're great. These same struggling readers need to have that type of instruction, but there absolutely must be a structured literacy program that addresses phonics. A struggling reader doesn't suddenly become proficient because they're in fourth grade. I request that you really take a look at this document. I plan to be back here again addressing some of the points. The State Department, along with communities and learning specialists, this is a magnificent document. We don't have to recreate the wheel. There are many things that we could be doing. I love the two programs, you know, the before-school program. Sadly, when I inquired about my son attending a before-school program, I was told he didn't, it's not for him, because that's for tiered intervention students. Well, just because someone has the special ed IEP shouldn't remove them from receiving a program intended to close that gap. So I'm delighted to see that we've pulled the ESER funds to provide some of these interventions, but I, I'm-
Mrs. McGinnley, your time is up.
My time's up, okay.
All right, seeing no, no one else on the list, okay? I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions for action. I need a motion to move finance.
Motion.
I have a couple of questions. Number six, is this additional money related to the ISIP? I guess this is a question for Michelle.
You're saying finance number six about Johnson Controls? Is that what you're asking? That is not. That's a normal contractor that we deal with. We put out to bid and we put every year onto the, onto the board agenda to approve that year, but it's a five-year bid that we put out.
Okay, because that's the same company as in the ESIP project, right? But this has nothing to do-
This has nothing to do with that.
Okay, all right. Number ten, okay? What is the difference between the two plans? Ten finances, this is all under finance.
Okay, we're required by law to offer a flexible spending account for employees, and so we do that. We've been doing that for, I think it's about 10 years now. And right now, the ESC, who we are a partner with and co-op with, they have put out a new bid and they got this, a new company that's doing the same service for school districts, offering us flexible spending account. It's a third-party administration service that they offer to us. We're, we're looking into this company now because the company we've had, we've had a few problems, but not real bad, but we think that going with a company that's dealing with school districts specifically will help us along the way. So we wanted to give it a, give it a shot, and some of the costs are less with this company, too.
Okay, so you think it's going to be easier to work with this other company?
I think so, and they understand the nuances of working with a school district.
Okay, so that's the benefit of it?
Yes.
Okay. And with number 11, okay, what caused the increase in cost? This is part of the-
Correct. I didn't get time to explain this to you earlier, just so you understand. You remember when we did the ESIP, it was over almost two years ago when we did all of that and we put it out to bid. It was a specific amount of money. When we had all that together, there was something on there called a rebate to one of the companies on there. And the fin, and now, remember, we had a finance team, we had a, we had an attorney, we had a bond counsel, we had everything involved in that, but everybody interpreted that, that hundred thousand dollars to be a prepayment on the ESIP. It was not. It was something that went directly to one of the vendors. It was something that the BPU offered and it went directly to a vendor. So we gave the one company a contract to do this much work in our district, which they did, and now when I got to the end of it, I'm like, wait a minute, we're missing a hundred thousand dollars of what's to be paid, and this is how we're handling this. We spoke with our auditor on how to handle it. I spoke with all the finance people from back then and they said, well, you have to, we have to pay the money, of course, because we wrote them a purchase order for that money.
Okay, so in a nutshell, basically there's a rebate that went to the contractor and not to us.
And not to, not to DCO, which is our-
Okay, all right, I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So on number nine in finance, in regards to the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, we had the option to fix our system or rebuild, and we've decided to fix it's a hundred and two thousand dollars roughly to fix. The tanks have a nine-year left on its life expectancy, and the current rebuild at today's price is roughly five hundred and fifty-six thousand, and it states here that we will, it will give us time to put money in capital reserve to plan to rebuild by the end of nine years. Could we get some clarification on how much yearly we're committing to put away so we will have these funds prepared at a premium, because it will probably be more than five hundred and fifty-six thousand in nine years to satisfy this, this project?
I totally agree with you that it will be more in nine years. Just this past, for June 2021, we put five hundred thousand into capital reserve just then, so we're able to put some money away into capital reserve and we will make sure that we're going to cover that expense.
So will it be specific for this particular project or just a total capital reserve we're going to keep?
It gets put in the capital reserve. It's the board's decision as we go on to see exactly where it goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
I just want to add to that, that the long-range facility plan is what drives the use of that money as well.
Hearing no other discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Motion to move facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Number one, I have a little question. With these rooms, which we are changing their designation for the preschool classes, we had disabled and inclusion, switching to inclusion, is there a difference between the
In regards to the program or the classroom?
The classroom.
The classroom space?
Yes.
Yes. The classroom space is more suitable for a self-contained classroom versus an inclusion classroom. So self-contained sometimes needs to have a little bit more space to be able to run the program effectively.
But I see a coupler going from the disabled to inclusion. Okay, so-
Yes, so the inclusion classrooms are what we aim for. We want our special education students to be with their like peers. So not only is it something that we aim for, but it's also something that the State Department encourages as well. So some of our preschool programs are being converted to inclusion classrooms that will include both special education and their typical peers.
So there's modifications made for that to go from disabled to inclusion?
In regards to classroom space?
Yes.
Sometimes, yes.
Okay.
Sometimes the spaces look different, not always.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Motion to move programs.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question about this one number five. Okay, so for those who are in the audience, just so everybody's kind of on the same page, the ESER II grant is supporting a before-school remedial tutoring service for at-risk students that were identified by their Intervention and Referral Service Department. So essentially, students are participating in this program. They'll come to school early, they'll receive about an hour of tutoring, if I'm reading it correctly, for about 24 days, so about 24 hours of tutoring. And this is through grant money. Grant money is always a great thing and it's helpful, but my concern is that after a very challenging, you know, COVID period, there's a lot of learning gaps and most likely those learning gaps expanded instead of shrunk. And we saw even in today's presentation, I was looking at grade four specifically, and as great as many students did, there was almost an equal number of students that didn't do so great, which makes sense for grade four, it gets a little bit harder in that grade. But these, I guess my two questions for this is, is there, one, how are you going to assess that such a quick program is actually working? I mean, it's only 24 hours with some of your weaker scholastically challenged students, so how do you know if that's working? And two, is there any talk about expanding these programs, maybe cutting into another budget or, you know, emergency COVID money if you're able to use it in this way? These before-school programs could be really, really effective. I just question how effective 24 hours is.
So the, the first question is how are we assessing the progress of the students within the program? And so, you know, the students that are targeted for that program are, as Mr. Rotante demonstrated, we have lots of formative assessments, so we use those formative assessments to help us identify who could benefit most from some extra support beyond what they're already receiving in the school day. So they're identified and we use those same assessments to monitor progress. So that's one way that they're assessed. This particular program is using our ESER funds, but it doesn't mean that it's the last program we will do. We do have other opportunities that we'll be looking at moving forward in the spring as well, and we also do have intervention during the school day in our elementary buildings. This is an elementary program, which is called Wind Period, and they receive what they need, again, based on the formative assessments, and that's built into the schedule every day. And as I said, we'll continue to expand our programs as well. Mr. Rotante, would you add anything to that? Can you come to the mic just so people can hear you, please?
Can I just ask a follow-up that Mr. Rotante could probably add while he's up there? Is there a benchmark that you're looking for where you could say, this is successful, we like this, we should potentially keep this going?
Sure. One of the programs that we're going to be using during that morning program is our IXL, and that keeps individualized student data on every child, so we can see growth and progress over the course of those 24 sessions. The ESER funds are available through September of 2024, and we've budgeted for this program to continue in multiple years in the fall of next year, spring of next year, as well as additional programs this year. So this is not just a one-shot, one-time thing. You'll see these programs ongoing for the next several-
You'll see these programs ongoing for the next several years through those funds. Consecu- like, we'll, we'll be offering some in the fall, some in the spring. I mean, again, the, the challenge with some of these programs is we need staffing, obviously, coming in before school to do them and then stay after school to do them and those kinds of things. So we can't, we just don't have the staff to run as many as we would like to concurrently. So they'll, they won't run consecutive. There are some programs overlapping, but they'll be, they'll be spaced out, like I said, over the next couple of years.
There's also some Title I programs that overlap with them as well.
Any other discussion? I do have a question. Number 17, what is CPI? This goes, this actually goes to the staff training.
So in the, in the student sections for training or, okay, CPI training?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's, what's CPI?
That's de-escalation training that we offer to our, our staff. And also, it's required for any student who might need restraining. Obviously, we don't promote that at all, but it is required training that staff who work with students who may escalate quickly have this training. So it's an annual training we do. We make sure everybody who works with students in that capacity are trained every year and refreshed every year.
Now, my next question that leads up to that is, I see there's two ma- major trainers and they're going in like late February. And most of the teachers are being trained in late January and early February. Are they doing the training or is there a company that comes in and does the training?
So initially, when this district first started that, that's using the CPI program, there's different types of programs. There's other companies that do this. The CPI training, we had those train the trainer happen so that we could have in-house training and not have the expense of always bringing in the company to train. So we do have train the trainer model. So our staff members do the training.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Need a motion to move students?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
About, what I planned on speaking about has been changed due to councilor's informative display on the ethics that the board is required to adhere to. I was unable to be here in December because I was ill. And some of what happened during that board meeting caused me some concern, but also piqued my interest into other areas. I want to discuss Oprah requests and ethics and the Jackson School District's severe lack of transparency. Over the many months since school started, I have submitted requests for documents and records and to date, I have received virtually none. The superintendent seems to believe that we, the parents and taxpayers, are not privy to what exactly the superintendent and the board are doing. I beg to differ. I am not asking. I am demanding the documents. I want to know exactly what is being done. I want to know who is voting. I want to know how each and every one of the board members are doing so. The responses to my Oprah request defy reality. If the Jackson School District is operating without any documentation or records pertaining to my requests, then that can only be done by either gross incompetence or purposeful fraud. Going back a bit to August, I informed the board that the Department of Education's hid policy was in fact being violated by the district. Board and educators, I was very clear when reading from the policy itself. It took quite a while, but the complaint was eventually made official, though no proof of a written report was ever provided via my Oprah request. And the Jackson Director of Security stated that it was investigated at the district level. No details of the investigation have been handed over. And after an Oprah request, I received copies of my own email, being forwarded twice. So basically, the accused investigated themselves and then ignored the complaint. And guess what? Nobody was guilty. Due to these actions, the district's lack of transparency, transparency and accountability have piqued my interest when it comes to the attorney who sits at the board meetings and any other attorneys that may represent the board or the district. Oprah requ- an Oprah request was sent for documents pertaining to the district's attorney and any retainer agreement and emails between the parties relating to the pandemic policies, the road forward agenda that we, the parents, were purposely denied participation in. The board's attorney is paid by the taxpayers and therefore, it is my belief that he works for the taxpayers. No attorney-client privilege between the township and the attorney should be enacted, considering whom it is that is paying for that retainer. I would really like to know if the attorney has been counseling the board, the superintendent or the Jackson School District on how to avoid my Oprah requests, how to conceal what's been really happening. And if he has counseled the superintendent on the statement that she made when she stated that Governor Murphy threatened the board, threatened the superintendent, threatened the school district with arrest or the loss of mon- of monies. It's my understanding through my research that that's a felony. The governor should have been prosecuted. The attorney, I believe, should have filed a criminal complaint as an officer of the court to have charges brought against Governor Murphy for threatening you. I find you to be cowards, not the new members. I welcome you. I don't know you yet. But the superintendent, the school, the principals, the teachers, the school board itself, any employees within the district that I haven't mentioned, anyone that is enforcing this unconstitutional mask mandate, punishing our children, tormenting them, abusing them, like I said, in the hid policy, you're all cowards. I understand and I have empathy for people that don't want to lose their jobs and need income. When a police officer takes his job, I expect him to protect the people that he's serving. If he gets hurt, he signed on for that. If a fireman goes into a house that's on fire and gets burned, he signed on for that. If you sign on to educate children and protect them, you don't get to abuse my kid a little bit. Just a little bit doesn't work. It's despicable that you're still allowing this to go on. Look around. Nobody's social distancing. Nobody's wearing masks. This doesn't happen anywhere else but in the schools. You're preying on the weakest. But I think you're doing it to get back at the children, at the parents, to weaken the parents and distract from what's really going on with the fraud in this state. We have a governor who just signed on to kill babies at birth. And this is who you're following. You're enforcing his mandates. The guy's a creep. He's okay with murdering babies, but yet you, you take his orders and you mash children and you harm them.
Mr. Kaufman, your time is up. Chavi Heller?
Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak up. I would like to address the issue we are currently having with transportation. I found out really late in the year that I will not be having transportation for both my boys' and girls' schools. I scrambled last minute and after many hours of phone calls and a bunch of dead ends, I finally found a driver available with a minivan. He was available to do the morning and afternoon runs, but being that I had two schools to figure out, I had to choose only one of them for him to drive for. Thankfully, he was able to do both school runs for the afternoon because of the different dismissal times that we have. Unfortunately, for my girls' school, I still have not found a driver for the morning. So every morning, me and my neighbors take it in turns. Obviously, it is a big stress and a big hassle and it disrupts our schedules immensely when it's our turn to drive. We try to do it with a smile for our children's sake because it's not their fault that we were unable to provide them with a stable transportation situation for the year. The van I hired works out for the most part, but many days of the month, we find ourselves scrambling last minute to run into a carpool run because something came up and the driver is unavailable. Just yesterday, I had to run to pick up my boys at three o'clock because the driver canceled in the last minute. He only let me know at three o'clock that he won't be available. So while all the boys were waiting around in school, an issue in itself, I had to figure out what to do with my baby because I needed the extra seat in my car for the other boys that I was going to drive home. It wasn't our deal, to say the least. And unfortunately, we know that this is something we have to deal with pretty often. Another issue with the van, and not just the van I arranged, but vans in general, is that vans are not safe. Vans are not regulated and vans do not have accountability. The van door slams shut, little five and six-year-olds pulling open and closing the doors themselves, their fingers so close by, cars passing, not realizing it's a carpool for children. It's borderline dangerous. Just last week, my nephew who's on my son's van got left in school because the driver somehow left without him. We are having unregulated transportation, transporting thousands of kids to school and back every single day. We must come up with a realistic plan of action. We need the entire non-public school transportation issue revamped. It probably makes the most sense to scratch the plan that we were using until now and come up with a completely new system that will have accountability and have the capacity to get as many of our children on buses as possible. There are so many of us willing to get involved and help out in any way that we can. This year, because we were waiting and hoping to have busing, we waited until the last minute to find our vans and van drivers. The van drivers saw how desperate we were and were able to hike up their prices because they knew that we had no choice but to hire them at those rates. So as much as the AIL helps us a little, the cost of our vans is so high, so it's not really covering that much of our transportation. If you add up the cost of transportation we're paying every month for a few children per family, it's frightfully expensive. I was here at the last meeting where the timing of the paperwork being received was discussed. Our schools do registration in September and October. So by November, we are able to get you all the information that you would need for the next school year. We, as parents, are willing to help out and send in whatever forms you would need by mid-November so that paperwork would not be an issue ever again. One last point. From the Asbury Park Press in November, before elections, three of our current board members said this to the Asbury Park Press, Allison Barakas, Tina Cass, Eric Osmond, and the former board member and former member of our Transportation Committee, John Spalpa. The pandemic and driver shortage has certainly impacted our busing situation, along with the growing non-public sector. Actually, it was more cost-effective to pay aid and loo for this school year. Going forward, though, as the non-public school population grows, we will need to adopt a system mirrored to one of our neighboring towns. A committee will have to review all the data and discern the best avenue to accommodate the needs of the non-public school children. So far, we heard nothing more of this conversation. We are asking you once again to please hear us out. Take all of this into consideration when figuring it out and please remember, we are here to help. We really need to come up with a plan of action so that we can put all of this behind us and move forward with a revamped transportation system. Thank you all for your time.
Debbie Janzlog?
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the time and opportunity to speak with you tonight. This is the first time I'm attending a meeting like this. I moved to Jackson approximately three years ago. This is the fourth school year that my children are attending schools here in Ocean County. In our prior district where we lived in Long Island, we had busing. And I think I took it for granted that we would have the same thing upon our move. I'm realizing now, after going through this process for three years and this year for the fourth time, that it is just not the case. So I felt it was time to speak up. I'm speaking up because there's a problem. There's a problem relating to busing for non-public school childrens. But I understand that there's also a possible solution out there. I'm not here to complain, but rather to communicate what I perceive to be a problem and convey my support for a solution that is supported by myself and others. The problem is how busing or aid and loo will be provided to non-public school children. I recognize that there's been an increase in the number of non-public school district, children in this district. And quite frankly, it's become apparent that the Jackson Transportation Office is not equipped to handle it. It's too much for them. I say this not to blame someone or claim that someone's not doing their job. Rather, it's a numbers game and it's just not working. The proof that it's not working is evidenced by the complete lack of communication between the Transportation Office and the non-public school parents. For example, do you need a B-60, a B-70 this year for the first time? Does your school have to send a B-80? Did I not get a letter from my kid's schools because my school didn't do something? The school reached out to the Transportation Office. They claimed they didn't get the letter. A day later, magically, it was found. Another example, you get no receipts. You submit a B-16 in March, timely, and you have no idea whether they accepted it, rejected it, was your ink color too blue, too black, too red? There's no way to know. There's no communication until suddenly your child does not get busing or you don't get your aid and loo check. Timeliness. It's not done in a timely manner. Without timely communication, we just don't know what to do. As the prior parent just said, we do what we can. We can arrange vans. We can arrange busing. Schools can bid on busing for our children, but we don't know whether Jackson will provide busing or not. And if Jackson will do so, we are happy to take advantage of that as we're entitled to. There's a solution out there. It's clear. The Jackson Transportation Office can't handle it. They can't communicate with parents. They can't communicate with the schools. They can't handle the routes. And it's a huge amount of paperwork between all the forms to handle. The solution is one, to liaise with someone for the non-public school parents. I was happy to hear that you announced earlier that there's now a place on the webpage for us to look, but it requires more than that. And the real solution is to outsource this problem. An option is LSTA. I'm not part of LSTA. I don't know all the details about it. What I do understand is that they're willing to pick up the Jackson routes for the cost of the aid and loo payments that Jackson is already paying the non-public school parents. It wouldn't cost Jackson anything more than what they are already shelling out. And the result is that the Transportation Office will no longer be overwhelmed and non-public school parents will have the transportation that they need. To me, this is a simple solution to a big problem. I recognize that I'm not familiar with the logistics of getting it done. So I'm here turning to you all as the members of the Board of Education who are familiar with the logistics to get it done. And I'm asking that you do two things. One, recognize the problem. Appreciate that it's a problem and own the fact that there are solutions. There are many solutions and let's craft a solution to this problem. Give serious consideration to the folks who have been explaining to you all about LSTA and how it can solve this problem so that we can reach a conclusion that's mutually beneficial, both to the Transportation Office that is overwhelmed and overworked, to the non-public school parents, and to everyone in Jackson. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Christine McGinley?
It's your turn.
This is a separate section.
Okay. And so I'm back to talk about dyslexia again and the fact that the district has information that they've, that you've put onto the district website. Underneath the Special Education section of the district's website, there's some information and a presentation that was provided by a Dr. Klimic. And this doctor's slide talks about remediation and it says specialized instruction with targeted interventions in reading through school during the school day, often based on Orton Gillingham, which foundations is. But the recommendation for older students and students where the foundations hasn't closed the reading gap, be it grade level and if they're in fourth grade and they're reading on a first-grade level, that gap or the intellectual gap. My son is extremely bright and the reading gap, you know, hence the IEP. But anyway, in this presentation, it specifically lists the Wilson Reading Program and the Barton Reading Program. These are programs where the tutor is specifically trained. It is an intensive training. And it has been proven to be very successful. The, the district's website notes these programs. We're not recreating the wheel. We need teachers who can provide this program for upper elementary, middle school and high school students. This is missing in our district. These are the proven programs. These are the proven programs that close those reading gaps. So I'm here requesting everyone on the board to help administration guide the curriculum. I would like very much to know when the Curriculum Committee meets, if parents and families are able to participate. Again, that document that I gave you, the Curriculum Meeting should address that document. There's a gap in our district for older learners, and it needs to be addressed. It's a serious problem. I thank you very much for your time.
Suri Robinson?
Nice to see you all again, again. I did not receive my B-70 this year yet. I did not receive one last year either. This year, however, my neighborhood chats were pinging with frantic confusion about this form that none of us had ever received before, and seemed to be now required to receive aid and loo. From my perspective, the communication between the Transportation Department that's in place now is simply not sufficient, albeit the efforts to improve. However, I do understand, the system is simply not built to accommodate such tremendous year-over-year growth of the non-public school students in Jackson. I'm very passionate about this issue, so I took the time to do some research and see what we're up against. I spoke with the LSTA, the Lakewood Student Transportation Authority, to get some data. There are 113, 113 non-public schools in Lakewood that have Jackson Township students enrolled. There is at least a 30% year-over-year increase. Just last year, we went from 1,400 to 3,200 Jackson students. And from the data they have so far, we're projected to have 5,000 students for this coming year. Working to improve a system that has failed us until now with smaller demographics is not the answer. As soon as we catch up, the problem will have only grown bigger and more complicated. We need development. Who can responsibly say that trying to do better is a realistic solution to a very quickly increasing problem? I'm suggesting that, as in most troubleshooting efforts, we need an overhaul, and we look to a successful model. The Lakewood Board of Education was overwhelmed by the increasing population and the quickly changing demographics. They contracted with the LSTA to handle this, and they got back to work on what they wanted to do and what they were meant to do, education. The LSTA designed a system that has elasticity to expand and accommodate growth for years to come. Jackson Township does not have this infrastructure in place, and very understandably so. Yet I ask you, how far are we going to take this? We as non-public school parents are suffering. Please look at this from a systemic perspective. We need an overhaul in the system. Please consider this model for realistic change, realistic improvement of the safety and dependability of transportation for our non-public school students. I thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the floor again. Have a good night.
Eli Gallagher?
Better now? How's everyone doing tonight? My daughter Ava is in fourth grade in Switlick, and she got a medical exemption for masks. Now, she basically was removed from the class the other day for not using hand sanitizer, because apparently that's a policy that we didn't know about. Now, we are in January, and we didn't know about this policy, where they're forcing these children to use hand sanitizer 24 hours a day, seven days a week, like it's something to do. I don't understand why. We personally don't want our daughter doing it. Now, she was removed from the class, the teacher never called us, never responded to us whatsoever. My wife emailed her, she never responded. Now, she didn't respond until after we already spoke to the principal. My daughter was brought to the principal's office of Switlick Elementary, and had, the principal called us and asked why she wouldn't use hand sanitizer. Because she doesn't want to, she wants to wash her hands instead. So now, she was being pulled from her education, she's missing education because of some imaginary policy over hand sanitizer. And personally, I believe, as though she's being treated differently because she doesn't have a mask on, because now her seat's been moved in class. So now she's off on the side of the class, and she's saying she has a difficult time seeing the board now. Now she's walking in the back of the line everywhere the class goes. Does this sound familiar to anybody? Because it sounds familiar to me, and I don't appreciate it. So now she's being discriminated against, as far as I'm concerned. She's being discriminated against because she doesn't have a mask on her face. The rest of these children should not have to wear a mask either, if it's up to their parents and they don't want to. This is absolutely absurd. This has gone so ridiculously far. I cannot believe you're okay with this. I'm just blown away. I'm here every month saying the same thing, and you people look at me with the same faces every month. Get out of your chairs and do something about this. I demand it. That's one. Number two, I wanted to ask the attorney that I'm paying for, if the superintendent is bound by the same rules of 18A:12-20. Is Mrs. Pormilli bound by the same thing, or is just the board bound by it, and she's separate from that? You'll respond at the end, I understand, thank you. And question three is, my daughter's teacher is Mrs. Wood. Now, Mrs. Wood has asked us multiple times during the year if we could bring in bottles of water, because these children have no access to water, if anyone understands that. They have no access to water. You know water, right? So, they can't get water. So, I guess they're only getting it in the cafeteria, as far as I'm concerned? So now, they're asking us to bring in water bottles. So me and my wife go to Costco, buy like four cases of water and bring them in, because the other parents either aren't bringing them in, and the kids are all drinking them out of the class, like I don't, this is so crazy to me. They can't use a water fountain? You have all your water fountains shut down. And now, you're not using money that we're giving you to buy water bottles to give my child because she's thirsty? Excuse me, what? What are we talking about here? We pay for water! Thank you. We pay for water for children in Africa. I pay for water for children in Africa. And my fourth grader doesn't have water because you guys won't buy it. Who's crazy here? Have a good night. Thank you for your time.
Here, Robinson?
Hi, everyone. My name is Hub Robinson, and I would like to know if you can help with the transportation problem with the students who go to private schools in Lakewood but live in Jackson and don't have transportation. It would make a big difference in our lives if we would be able to have transportation to and from school. Thank you for listening and have a great night.
Ilana Robinson?
Hi. My name is Lana, and I want to know if you could help for busing, thank you.
Sarah Frohn?
Hi. I wanted to first address the fact that a lot of, I know people that support the things that I have to say have left. It's not in lack of support, it's because most of them have four or more children, and it's late, and they have to get home. It's not a reflection of support. I live in Jackson. I'm not anybody important, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so technically, I guess I'm a nobody, except to them, I'm a somebody. I moved here two years ago from upstate New York. I lived on an acre of land, beautiful property. I had deers come to visit, raccoons, I even had a bear. It was like Snow White's property. It was beautiful, it was an oasis. I moved to Jackson because my children, who I will always put first, would do better in the Lakewood schools. I was actually told that by someone from the schools that they were currently attending. We moved right before the pandemic, and we moved to Jackson because it was the closest thing to the beautiful place we lived in previously. I am grateful to every member and resident in Jackson for taking such beautiful care of the properties, for keeping it so clean and beautiful. I appreciate it, and I'm humbled to be a part of your community. It's a privilege. Thank you. I could have moved to Lakewood. My child is in school in Lakewood, not because of anything against the schools in Jackson, but because those schools meet the religious standards that our family chooses to follow. My son's school is a 20-minute drive each way. I spent hours, hours on the phone, weeks into school, I called 21 drivers to see if anyone could bring the 15 children in my neighborhood to their schools on time. I was told my best bet was to purchase a van for $50,000 and hope someone could drive them. I would sit in parking lots outside the supermarket, and if someone parked with a 15-passenger van, I would go up and ask them, "Are you willing to make a couple bucks and bring my child to school?" It's scary, but we're desperate. Luckily, we were able to find a reliable, safe individual to do that, but this is not in any way, shape, or form a permanent solution. Others have already stated the other options that we have, so I won't repeat it. But it does feel exclusive and hurtful to sit in traffic. Actually, yesterday, I sat behind, I almost took a picture, five school buses in a row. And I thought, wow, that must be nice for my neighbors to have that, because we don't. I understand if there are only 100 Jewish children who are going to the Lakewood schools, but we have over 3,000, and like someone said previously, soon to be over five. I would say to please think if you had a child that you felt you found the perfect school for, and you wanted to send him to that school, and you just needed a bus to get there, I would support you in getting that bus for your child, because you're my neighbor and I care about you. I would fight for you to have the same things that I'm asking for. I trust each member of the board to do the right thing, specifically the members that had written, in the Asbury Park Press it was printed, Allison Burakas, Tina Cass, and Erica Osmond, that they promised that going forward, the non-public school population grows, we will need to adopt a system mirrored to one of our neighboring towns, and a committee will have to review all the data and discern the best avenue to accommodate the needs of the non-public school children. And I trust you. I do. I believe in you, and I trust you, and I trust your words. I trust that you will keep in mind that we need to look out for each other, to take care of each other, most importantly, to be kind to one another. And I'm asking that you let us help you to help all of us. I think Mr. Rogers taught all of us, it's the neighborly thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Shava Loewy?
Good evening. I'm a resident of Jackson over five years, and I moved here with varying ages of children. I have a daughter in elementary school, I have a son graduating eighth grade, and a daughter graduating 12th, I have a daughter graduating college this year, and another one that's employed outside of high school. So I think I do have an idea of the varying different stages as a mom. I'm here to talk to you about the lack of transportation. I know you guys heard a lot about that tonight, and also the lack of communication regarding this. My youngest daughter, who's seven, had a bus from Jackson Township for the past two years, and that was amazing for me, and allowed me to work many hours. Unfortunately, this year, I was notified after the school year started that she didn't have a bus. Had to cut my hours, I'm doing about a third of the time at work now because of that. And I know this is just like one story of me, but I know that my story mirrors many of my neighbors, many people who are in this tight spot in the mornings, trying to get their kids out. I know I'm driving my daughter personally twice a day, every day. It's about 20 minutes there and back to bring her to school. Just wanted to ask you if there's anything you can do to make the situation better for us, so that we can lead more productive lives. Thank you.
Jennifer Gallagher?
Thank you. Hi, guys. So I just wanted to ask if you guys are aware of the new information that the CDC put out regarding the inefficiency of cloth masks, and the recommendation that N95s are the superior mask, which unfortunately are not suitable for children. So I just wanted to know if you guys have discussed the idea of returning to pre-COVID policies, since there's essentially absolutely nothing anyone can do to prevent or contain the spread of this virus. Our President of the United States has addressed the pandemic, and it stated it cannot be resolved on a federal level, and he's left it up to the state to decide how to deal with it, and all of the efforts made by the state has also been proven ineffective. I would like to propose to the board to send out a survey to all of the parents in the district and see if we would like to return to pre-COVID policies. And for once and for all, accept the coronavirus as just another sickness. If the criteria for resuming pre-COVID health policies consists of the coronavirus being completely eradicated first, we will never allow our children the opportunity to go back to their normal. Outside of the classroom setting, their lives have resumed some semblance of normal, no masks, no having to prove their health status to enter an establishment, they can come and go wherever they please fairly easily without much interruption at all. But then Monday morning hits, and it's back to this sad alternate reality that they're living. Everything you're doing is silly. It's all for show so that you can continue to get money. So I'm just curious as to how much our children are really worth. Have they generated enough profit for their pain and suffering yet? What happens when a child passes out? Who is responsible for that? You, me? Between the taxes we all pay and the exorbitant funding you've received, isn't that enough? If it's not, how much will be enough? Because it is crystal clear that you are indeed chasing a never-ending check. At the expense of our children, as young as four years old, thanks to your preschool program, you're warping young impressionable minds into thinking they should be afraid of everyone around them, including themselves. If these antics were occurring prior to this pandemic, every single one of you would be brought up on criminal charges for child abuse, physical, mental, and emotional abuse. And the only reason you're all still sitting comfortably in those seats is because we have a dictator for a government kicking and screaming his way through the state of emergency, because he doesn't want to be told no. Haven't your mothers ever asked you if your friends jumped off the Brooklyn Bridge? Does that mean you should do it too? Because that is exactly what we're doing. When did critical thinking and common sense become so taboo? We know this isn't working. We know there's probably nothing that will work to stop this dead in its tracks, and this is all at the expense of our children's lives. One day, this is all going to end, and things will go back to normal, but our children will forever be changed, these years of their lives will be those of horror, and you are all responsible. You have all had your hand in this cookie jar. In closing, just so my questions don't get lost in translation, I'll repeat them. Why are we still masking our children when the CDC has said cloth masks don't work? How much money is enough money for our children to gain their freedom back? And exactly what is it going to take to resume pre-COVID health policies? I would like the board to send out one of its famous surveys, asking the parents of this district if they feel comfortable resuming pre-COVID health policies and continuing an optional mask mandate for those who wish to continue sending their children in masks. Also, I would like to know who is responsible when a child gets injured from wearing a mask in school. Thank you.
Malka Niddoldren?
First of all, I wanted to tell you how much I really had an appreciation for what you guys, and this is a long meeting. Thank you so much. I am yet another Jackson parent of children that are not in public school, and I'm relatively new. I moved here from another district in Jersey. I moved here from another district in Jersey, just this year, August, and I'm a working mother. I actually teach high school kids. And one of the things that we had to do when we work, or just have kids, or just have life, is plan. And I am a planner. My husband wants to surprise, I said, "No, I need a plan." And I started the school year thinking we had a plan, and then had no plan. I have three kids in three different schools. One is actually in preschool, but by next year, he will be in school. And three different start times, three different end times, completely separate areas from where I live, like 20 minutes each way, each school. So I would be out of the house from 7:30 till 9:30, with my youngest being in school in the car the longest, and the same goes for the afternoon, from like me being in the car longer, but the kids in the car from 3 till 5 with the different pickups and trapeles. Now, obviously, this is not ideal for them and their educational needs. It's not good for kids to be in the car for so long, to not like be able to move, or play, or, you know, do anything. And it's not your problem, really. It's not an educational need per se, it's an extra. But this is hurting their educational needs. I expected, because in previous years, my son's school had transportation, so all I was dealing with was my daughter's school. I found out after school started already, I guess because I didn't know, because I hadn't lived here, that, oh, no, you're not getting transportation either. And like many of the other parents here, I scrambled. I called every van, every company, some, if I could fill up 14 seats, which, because of the different starts and end times, didn't work, some were exorbitant fees, and if I called in November, they wanted me to pay from September, which I would, but I can't pay for everybody. I tried to quit my job in November, because I told my boss, I said, "I can't do this." And she tried, she called former students who are in college part-time to see if they could pick up the kids, if they could do... Nothing. We ended up working out, my daughter, who is six years old, sits in school for 45 minutes after she finishes school, because I can't get there at the time. I can't be in three places at once. I worked out my work schedule, because I assumed that she finishes at 3:45. I finish work at 3:30, I'll pick up my little one from preschool, and I'll be able to get home. That's not happening. She'd be having getting it at 3:30, because there's so many parents have to do, you know, pickup, so they have to start so much earlier. I can't finish work at 3:30 across town, pick up another child, and be there. I get there by 4:10. And the first few times I did it, she cried. And I felt so bad, this poor child, five years old, now six, and has to sit around doing nothing. I mean, they're supervision, you know, it's a good school, but, you know, besides for like an adult there, there's nothing going on there. And this is not helping her educationally, it's not helping her grow to what she is, whether it's her free time, or her homework time, or whatever it is. And I've tried so many things. I tried calling car services, who have no minivans, obviously, that's like, you can't find a minivan, but even cars. But we have little kids, and I tried, they're a reputable company, and myself and a neighbor, who had a five-year-old, you know, two kids together, the third day, I got a phone call, 45 minutes after school went out, and we were kept cool, like, why aren't we hearing about these kids? Oh, they just never came to pick up the kids. And this is already this, you know, reputable company, good little kids, they can't be picked up by a car service. And I just, I feel really bad, because it's no one's fault, and like I said, it's not out of anger. We need a solution. And, you know, I've taught history for 15 years, and like I've told my students, you know, with the different political parties, and, you know, what they do when their economy's not doing well, and none of them really work, or some of them work somewhat, and if there was an easy answer, then we would all just do it. Clearly, there's no easy answer. But what is currently happening, and the lateness in which we are finding out, like I said, as parents, and as, you know, functioning members of society, and all my time's almost up, we need to plan. And we are asking to do things well in advance, like other parents have said. I sent some paper, I went to all my neighbors, and I dropped off paper in person, so that we should be able to get things done as quickly as possible. We need to plan earlier in advance, so that we're not stuck last minute trying to call multiple places that might not be safe for our children. So we are just asking to have safe transportation for our children, the same that public school children and peers get at the same time. So I really appreciate it, thank you so much, and have a great night.
Vahuba Kowski?
Hi. I'd like to begin by sharing two letters. First, I have written to the Township of Jackson regarding last school year, the 2020-2021 school year. To whom it may concern, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for providing my children with bus service to their respective private schools. The Jackson Township Board of Ed has serviced my children in both the Lakewood Chater School and Benos Yakal with reliable and punctual transportation. The drivers took a genuine concern about the safety of our children. A special shout-out to Ms. Laura of Bus 511 to the Lakewood Chater School, who had above and beyond her call of duty in ensuring all the boys were safe and happy on their quite long commute to and from school each day. Thank you for giving us such a positive experience with the Jackson Township busing. To contrast, the second letter was written by my daughter about six weeks ago, in response to her frustration of my constant carpool runs. To whom it may concern, hi, my name is Rachel Kowski. I'm 10 and 1/2 years old, a resident of Jackson and Grotow Private School. Since Jackson Township decided not to provide busing for my private school, my two brothers and I don't have a bus. So my parents have to drive us to our schools in Lakewood. It's very hard for my parents, because it's far and tiring, and they end up spending more than two hours in the car each day. And my mother doesn't have enough time to even eat a full breakfast. Mothers of children that go to private schools across Lakewood have the same exact problem. Can you please do something to change that? Sincerely, Rachel C. P.S. I go to Benos Yakal Elementary School. As one can easily conclude from this letter, the lack of transportation for our children has taken a toll on every member of the family. In many homes, parents help younger children learn the days of the week based on the amount of days until the weekend, what day of the week they have an extracurricular activity, what night of the week is their favorite dinner served, or the like. This year, in my home, my kindergarten-aged son determines a day of week based on carpool schedule. Each day, he wakes up and asks me, "Who's driving to school today? Who will pick me up? Do we go to pick up the girls' carpool? Is it our turn to get the older boys?" Although at face value, this may sound purely technical, I'm sure it takes an emotional toll of the children as well. A child who goes to school thinking about how they'll get to school each day, will my carpool bring me to school on time? And then sits in class all day worrying, "Who will come to pick me up? How will I recognize that car or van I should be going home with? Or will my mother be home when I'm dropped off? Or will I just have to wait for a neighbor until she's back from a different carpool run?" This is surely not... The children are surely not able to have a settled mind to focus on their learning. Therefore, I implore you to please, on behalf of children like my... Parents of children like myself, who are trying to juggle raising happy, healthy children while transporting multiple children to different schools at different times, and, more importantly, on behalf of the children who need their transportation to be consistent for their emotional stability, please make significant changes to the private school transportation, so that our children can be transported to private schools via school buses in a safe, consistent, and reliable manner. Thank you for listening.
Jamie Lohman?
Good evening. So for the last two years, you all treated our children like infested, disease-infested COVID spreaders. I'll never forget the beginning of the school year, and everybody kept saying, "Oh, we're gonna have the worst outbreak ever." Well, whatever happened over winter break really proved everybody wrong. And I feel like that every teacher, administrator, Board of Ed member, superintendent owes our children a huge apology for making them feel that way. The state of emergency that Murphy put into place is a political attack on our children. He didn't put a mask mandate anywhere else but in our public schools. With upholding Murphy's dictatorship, you all are just as accountable for the manipulation and abuse that is happening to our children. In the past, I used to trust our teachers and administrators with my children, but now I don't. It's sad that every day when they come home from school, I question them, "What happened? What was said to you? What went wrong today?" For instance, making our children run laps in gym indoors while wearing masks, when an executive order clearly states that aerobic activity, a mask shouldn't be worn. Our children are looking at our gym teachers, and our gym teachers need to state that to them every time they come to gym. You're allowed to take your mask off. My daughters tell me all the time, no gym teacher states that to them. Hearing that teachers are teaching in classrooms with no mask on, while our children have to sit in their desk with a mask on, watching secretaries in our school offices not wearing masks, when I pick up my children. Every... Wait, here's the best one. The first day of virtual learning, I'm sitting, listening into my daughter's classroom, a teacher's interrogating every student on the Google Meet on who had COVID over winter break. Why? Why does she need to know that? It did call the school. Our principal definitely took care of it, but that is not necessary. Also, seeing pictures of administrators and teachers standing closely together for photo ops during school hours, with children around, having to be masked when they're not masked. Just recently, an aide in my daughter's classroom walked in while children were having their mask break. She turned around and said to one of the kids, "If you don't put your mask on your face, back on your face, I will tape it to your face." I emailed all of you. I emailed the principal. Okay? I have to say, Mrs. Phillips was on her game, emailed me back at 6 o'clock at night and told me she would take care of it. But here's the thing, why is an aide allowed to say that to somebody? I don't care if they're joking or not, you do not turn around and tell a child. Now, mind you, this child was allowed to be on her mask break. When I asked my daughter what happened, she said the substitute was completely shocked by her behavior. My daughter has expressed to me that she does not feel safe around this aide, if that's how she's going to act. Every day, I tell my children to be respectful, but here's the thing, how can I teach my kids to be respectful if they aren't getting the same respect in return? I have to say, it's disgusting that every one of you turn your head to the side and look the other way. As a parent, we are asking you to put your pride aside, and start showing that you are willing to stand up for our children, and making it a parent choice. I love that idea of sending out a survey to find out who would want their kids to actually attend like COVID never existed. Thank you.
Davora Gruskin?
Good evening. My name is Davora Gruskin, and I'm here to talk about a few points regarding the non-public transportation. Firstly, as I did after the last meeting, I would like to publicly offer my practical assistance as a parent very familiar with the process, and as a transportation administrator in a school. I would like to help facilitate proper communication between the board members, the transportation department, and the non-public schools. I am a busy mother of five, but I am willing to give a precious time for this cause, because change must happen, words are not enough. I also want to discuss some concerning incidents that occurred over the last two weeks from a different perspective. I currently work on a part-time basis as the Transportation Director for the Lakewood Chater School, which is the largest non-public school in Lakewood. Many parents reached out to me, that the district informed them that the school had not submitted a proper B-8T form, thereby delaying the mailing of their B-7T forms. When I reached out to the district, I was told that the form was submitted, but was missing a signature. I think proper communication would dictate that I should have been informed of a missing signature in a timely manner, preventing this delay. When I came down to the office to straighten this out, the computer system was suddenly missing all students in one of our buildings, a total of over 70 children. I was told these forms were not received, and that's why they're missing from the system. However, 45 of these missing students are actually on a bus that runs through the Jackson Board of Ed. Eventually, after I pointed that out, the students were found. However, this incident and the numerous questions that I fielded regarding the B-7T forms from parents clearly indicates that the needs of providing transportation for the non-public sector is really not possible within the current system. Our three schools, our three buildings combined, have an enrollment of over 5,000 students. Approximately 9% live in Jackson, 1% live in Tom's River and Howell combined, and 90% live in Lakewood. I can confidently say that more than 50% of my time and my work is related to the students who live in Jackson, who are less than 10% of our roster. There's constant confusion over paperwork, forms, procedures among the parents, and definitely not clear instructions given to the school. Last year, in letters that went out to private school administrators and parents, Michelle stated, and I quote, "It was brought to my attention that the timing of this process is not the best for parents. This makes this the transition year harder. However, please know that I'm setting up a system for future years also, with plans in place to provide parents with earlier information." I don't have to re-quote, but three current board members, Mrs. Barakas, Mrs. Cass, and Dr. Osmond, were also quoted that going forward, as the non-public sector grows, we will need to adopt a system mirrored to our neighboring towns, and a committee will have to review all the data, discern the best avenue to accommodate the needs of the non-public school children. Mr. Sargent, I thank you for your commitment to improve the transportation for the non-public school students. To the rest of you, I implore you to look at the options that are available to safely transport our children to school. The Lakewood Board of Ed, after providing transportation for public and non-public school students for many years, had to outsource their busing to the LSTA due to the rapid growth and complications involved in the busing of our non-public students. I beg you to take a good look at the current situation, as well as the projected growth, and come up with a sensible solution for the coming year and for the future. Thank you for your time.
Nicole Greisb?
Hi, everybody. Just a couple questions. My first question is about the Transportation Committee. I'm curious who's on it, and if there's any public school parents on the Transportation Committee, okay? The other thing is that I've been researching this, all the ESSR funding, and this Road Forward Plan that the district has adopted, that I believe every district in New Jersey has to adopt in order to receive their ESSR money. And I'm wondering what the requirements are for this, because what I'm finding is that you are required to mask, quarantine, test, and push vaccine information out, and it needs to be proven and submitted every six months to the state of New Jersey until September 2023. And I'm just really curious as to if that is true or not, because how can you agree to 2023, when we don't even know what's going on with COVID on a, you know, month-to-month basis? Again, I don't have anything from Jackson District. I'm looking and researching, and this is all I can find about the funding and the road to recovery, or the Road Forward Plan. So my question is, is this true, that you're agreeing to the masking, quarantining, testing, and vaccinating for all of this year, and also next school year, in order to receive the ESSR money from the state? I also wanted to know, number eight here, about the Road Forward, that there was a revision. I was wondering what the revision was. It says that the plan was, will be presented at this board meeting, so I was just wondering what that revision was. And, oh, and to let you know that the district that I work for uses the Murphy ESSR money to buy cases of water. Every day, we get a case of water delivered to our classroom. So it can be done. Thanks.
Fega Bimaker? That's the end of my list.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So please be patient, obviously, there's a lot of people who spoke this evening. I want to make sure that I get an opportunity to review some of my notes first. I'll work backwards up. The last questions about the Transportation Committee is a board committee, and they will be meeting relatively soon. So it's board members who are on that committee, who then report back out to the public about the work that was done and discussed in that meeting. So once the transportation... So once the Transportation Committee meets, they'll come to the public meeting. As you heard earlier this evening with Mr. Walsh, who was asking for committee reports, that's the opportunity for the public to hear and to provide input and feedback on what they hear. Are, in regards to what is allowable uses for the ESSR funds, anything that is an allowable use is listed on the state website, but we would be happy to link that to our district website. To be a little bit more clear, my understanding is that the State Department is working on a performance report that will require us to complete every six months, that's what you referenced, in regards to how we are using that money. So I'm also interested to see what they're going to ask us to report on. But at this point, I have not heard that there's any requirement for us to be making sure people are vaccinated other than the executive orders that are currently in place. I'll take a look at that, but I'm, again, I haven't seen that report and what we're going to be required to report on. What we have had is what everybody else has seen as the allowable uses and what we can spend that money on. Yeah, those are the allowable uses. So if I have anything else that comes to my way, we'll absolutely put it on the website for sure. Okay. The next thing that I was, excuse me. Ma'am, public comment is closed.
This is not a back-and-forth case.
But I'd be happy to speak with you afterwards.
Ma'am, ma'am, we are going to ask security to remove you if you disrupt the meeting, okay? Can you please have respect and allow Ms. Permili to answer the questions? You're not even giving her a chance.
I did answer the question, and again, if you have further questions, please give me, my office a call if I haven't completely answered. I believe I answered it. In regards to the non-public, obviously, we've heard you, we've heard you at the last meeting as well. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are looking to improve communication. Ms. Richardson, I'm sure will speak to that a little bit as well. Obviously, we too would like to see an increase in communication. We understand and hear you in regards to it being difficult to transport your children with an aid and lo payment. As I had said at the last meeting as well, it was a difficult year last year. We're aiming to improve, we're continually looking to strengthen our system in regards to communication and the processes, for sure. So we have, and you can see on the agenda tonight, we have hired additional staff in the Transportation Department to help with that. There is a plan to move forward and be able to be more transparent. Again, with the website is another step forward, and Ms. Richardson will be working with our transportation director to expand upon that, strengthen it, and do better. We did have our challenges, as you all know, with the driver shortage as well. Ms. Richardson, would you add anything to that?
I just want to say that, you know, it's been, it's been a difficult year for everyone in transportation, not just Jackson Township Board of Ed, but also, as I heard many of you say, it's been difficult trying to get extra transportation. We are struggling with the same things. We have our, we're having to do double backs at the end of the day and things like that because of the lack of drivers and the means to transport even the public school students. Last year, we were able to transport some of the non-public schools, and we've been doing that for at least five years now. And we had hoped to continue to do that, but everyone's aware that with the lack of drivers and the lack of busing, we were not able to do that. And we did try everything we could do. And we spoke with the community very, you know, very often with, you know, we were very transparent for where we were during the time all of last year. And we'll continue to do that. One of the things we've done, as Mrs. Permili said, is we created the website, which had some things on there, but we were putting more on there. We want you to have a place to go in order to see what's going on. And everyone knows my email address and my phone number. You can call me and send me emails. We are doing a lot to improve the situation here, but we cannot pull drivers out from somewhere that, they don't exist. They just don't exist, and we're all experiencing that right now. But as we move forward, we have to follow a process. We have to take the B-6T forms that are sent in so that tell us how many students there are. We take that and we see, can we provide transportation? The answer right now is no. But then we give that information to someone who can bid the route out. Once, after we bid the route out and they still can't do anything for it, that's when we pay the aid and lo amount. The form this year that is causing some problems is the B-7T form. We were not compliant with the law, be honest about that. We didn't, we were not aware. As we start to do better, we start to learn more things about what we should be doing. We should have always been doing a B-7T form. We weren't doing that, so now we know better, we are going to do better. We are doing the B-7T form. We've sent that out to everybody. It's on our website, so if you did not get one, you can just download it from the website. It's also on the Department of Ed's website. And you have to send that form in order to get payment. We sent it out to everyone who had a B-6T in our office and who were ready to pay the end of this month, which is in a week and a half. We're ready to pay those, so we sent the B-7T out to them in order to send it back to us. We gave explicit instructions that you would handle that form. And we also set up an email address where you can email and get answers quicker, you know? So we really are trying hard to make sure that we're communicating everything we need. We're going to update the website, as she said, whenever we have that opportunity. Now, several people mentioned dealing with the LSTA. That's a vendor. He's a vendor. We cannot, there's a, there's a process that we have to go through in order to hire a vendor. The Board of Ed has to go through that process. It's not just, okay, let's do that. We have to go through the process that's set up by the state of New Jersey. So that, that's just another discussion that we can discuss at another time. But at the same time, like I said, you can always reach out to us. We will always talk to you about the situation that's going on as best we can. But we are, we are open to communicating about all of it at all times. And I know that the timing is important, and we are doing our best to do it quicker in order to give you more information this year. We've already discussed all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, and we will continue to strengthen, for sure. So in regards to our PE teachers, they do communicate to their students that they are encouraged to take off their face masks while physical activity, and that has been emphasized and stressed multiple times throughout the school year, most recently, again, at a department meeting. So again, I would encourage, if you're having a particular problem in a school, to reach out to the individual teacher and also the principal so that can be addressed if you're having an individual issue. In regards to the questions Mrs. Gallagher, you had in regards to a suggestion for surveying parents, I just want to remind the public that before the executive order, we did do that. We did survey parents, and this district was moving for masks optional. If you look back at some of our plans, that was what we were aiming for until the executive order came through. And again, I know that you don't agree with us and that you don't support this, but we are required to follow the executive order. Again, I understand that you don't agree with that. There is no dollar sign that, obviously, that we have. This isn't about money for us. This is in regards to us doing what we're required to do. As far as pre-COVID policy, obviously, we are very hopeful to get back to some sort of normalcy in regards to what it was prior to the pandemic. And we are hopeful that this surge begins to go the other direction and we begin to be able to get back to some normal protocols. And obviously, I know you disagree with me, but there is nothing more than I would like to see, and I believe this board as well, is to get back to some normalcy and working in a better capacity. In regards to, again, other questions, or actually, they weren't really questions. They were statements in regards to things that have happened in classrooms. And with administration, again, I encourage you to reach out to them and follow the chain of command. If there's something else that needs to be discussed, you may call my office. Please, I didn't interrupt you, I just asked for the same respect. I'll wait.
Listen, okay? You have to stop this. You got to stop the heckling. It's got to stop.
Okay, I'd like to address, please, the public right now. I know that you're in disagreement. My, I am listening, the board is listening, but because we don't agree with what you are saying or not taking action with what you request does not mean that we're not listening and we are not responding. So please, I ask for the same respect that I give everybody else and not interrupting, please. In regards to the dyslexia, I'll wait.
Ladies and gentlemen, there was a lot of questions asked. We listened attentively. Would you at least let Ms. Permili try to answer the questions? They may not be to your satisfaction, but I think you owe her that respect in return. And sir, if you're going to continue to disrupt the meeting, which is illegal in the state of New Jersey, then security should remove you, okay? You don't have a right to disrupt a public meeting.
Enough, enough!
I think it's time you left. Guys, come on, we have small children here, please. Please, we got small kids here. We have small kids.
Mr. Walsh, I'm going to recommend that we end public response. I'm not going to respond.
Okay. That's it with the public forum. If, if you call the superintendent, she will answer your questions as far as that's concerned, correct? Give her a call tomorrow, and she'll answer her questions. All right. Board comments. Okay, we'll start right to left.
Just want to say thank you for everyone coming. Have a good night. I just want to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to reiterate what Ms. Permili says. We are listening. I know that a lot of people don't agree with a lot of the things going on, but some of us do, some of us don't. Everyone has their own opinion. We are listening, and I think she's doing the best that she can for the entire district. I think everybody that sits up here believes in that. We all have children of our own in the district, so I think we're all just doing our best. Thank you.
Mr. Palmeri.
I would like to thank everybody who came out this evening. I would like to thank everybody that commented tonight, and I want you all to know, for those that are still here and for those that are watching on television and going to YouTube this later, your, your comments tonight did not fall on deaf ears, and your passion was felt. And I want to thank you all for coming out, and I want you to please get home safely. I'm sorry that this had to be uncivil towards the end of the evening, but we're all here for you, whether you believe it or not. This is my first official meeting. I ran on transparency, and that's what you're going to get, and that's what we've been doing. So just, we hear you, we appreciate you, and we would love for you to continue to come out and pack this auditorium, because that's what we want. We want the community here. So guys, God bless you, God bless America, and get home safe.
Ms. Baracus.
I too want to thank the Jackson residents for voting me in for the, for the one-year seat. Really looking forward to working with the current board now that we're all here. And for those of you that came out this evening and for those of you that are sitting at home, you know, give us the opportunity. We just got here, we're, we're learning as quickly as possible. We hear you. We, we all have children in the district or have had children in the district, and we definitely want to make sure we're bringing the, you know, taking the information that you're bringing to us, you know, working together and being able to bring a solution that makes sense for everyone. So all I ask is that you come, you give us the opportunity to hear you, come together as a Board of Ed when we have our meetings, and then come back to you and be able to give back the information or what we've come out, you know, what the solutions are. Again, thanks, everyone, for coming out, and for those of you that are watching on TV. Thanks.
Dr. Osmond.
So I think most of us could agree that when you run for a volunteer position like this, you do this because you believe in public discourse, you believe in giving back to your community, and all of those good things. And as Ally was saying, there's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, because the majority of your board right now is brand new. And so with that, civility is going to be really, really important that we kind of keep at the forefront, right? So we understand that we all have kids in the school, we get it, you know? Nobody wants to wear masks, nobody wants COVID to be around. I'm sure you see that I wear masks throughout this meeting, because I believe if we're asking our kids and our teachers to do something, we should do it, right? So we shouldn't ask people to do things that we're not willing to do as a board. With that said, you have to give us an opportunity to hear you, but at the same time, we need to hear what Ms. Permili is saying, we need to hear the answers so that we could kind of catch up, because there's a little bit of a learning curve here, we're brand-new people. So just kind of keep that in mind going forward. We're definitely listening. We may not agree on every single thing, but we could work together, right? That's what discourse is about, and that's what public service is about. That's why we tried to get these roles. So give us a chance, keep coming to meetings. I think it's great, if I agree with you or not personally, that people are going up to that microphone and talking. Using your voice as a tool is super important. You know, even the young kids who came up to the microphone, teaching them to be advocates for themselves is something that's important, right? So we're hearing you, give us, give us a chance, but we really need people to listen to what our leaders are saying, because we have to hear that as a board. We're not in the school every single day, this is a volunteer position, we're not there 24/7, so we really need to hear what they're saying. Thank you.
Mr. Sargent.
So first of all, I'd like to say that I'm looking forward to Mr. Walsh signing all of us, our, our new committees. I'm definitely going to be on the Transportation Committee, whether anybody likes it or not, because there are so many things with transportation that need to change. I'm looking forward to finding out about the B-17 forms or whatever they are. I'd like to know who's ultimately responsible for them. The LSTA, I, Ms. Permili intimated to me that she looked into that company or whatever it is, and I'd look forward to reading her notes and possibly anybody else that has any other information regarding it, because that could be a viable option for the private school children, and not just the community at large that was here tonight, but also the other communities as well. I don't wear a mask for a reason. I don't think anybody has to guess why I don't wear a mask. So I, I am kind of offended when people get up to the microphone and accuse me of being one of those people, because I'm not. That's it, drive safely.
Mrs. Rivera.
I want to thank everyone for coming, their input, their comments, and presentations. We are actively listening. Thank you, Ms. Permili and staff, for all your hard work and dedication, and have a great and safe night.
Thank you all. I would really like to thank the AV Department of the district. Their live streaming of sporting events and concerts has really kept everyone connected as far as that's concerned, and we've really upped our technology in the last couple of years. We were forced to, but I really would like to throw some accolades at them. The use of YouTube, okay, to show what is going on in our schools, even though we're all not allowed in there at the time. And I'd also like to throw an accolade out to a retirement that was And I'd also like to throw an accolade out to a retirement that was on there, okay? It's our Director of Guidance for the District, Kurt Holtz, okay? Who's done a great job over the years. Okay, he's going out in July, and he will be missed. Everybody have a safe ride home. See you again. Mission... Okay, motion to adjourn by acclamation.
Motion.
Favor, everybody?
Aye.
Aye.